See that these vests are out, so it must be October. We're gonna do a public comment. I've got David Trumbull from where?
Good morning.
So, Mr. Trumbull, as you remember, it's three minutes and we're still using my cellphone. So. Angela, do you have a timer as well?
I can.
I'd just like to have a double. I mean, I was just gonna do mine, but. Over to you, Mr. Trumbull.
Thank you. Good morning, committee members. I'm here to discuss the 306 regulations. Today, I want to talk about them from a legal point of view. First, a brief discussion of separation of powers. When the New Hampshire Legislature was drafting its new laws for oversight of regulations, they asked the New Hampshire Supreme Court for their opinion, and they issued their opinion. The court held, when writing regulations, administrative agencies can only, quote, "fill in the details of the statutes." Rules that go beyond the filling in of the details are invalid. Rules may not add to, detract from, or in any way modify statutory law. So I'd like to look at the 306 regs through that lens. First is the area of civil rights. Our existing statutes protect civil rights in our public schools by naming the rights in the eleven protected classes of people. The current regs are constitutional. They fill in the details. They name the protected classes and they name specific rights. For example, the right to a fair and equitable code of discipline. The proposed regulations take out all mentioned unprotected classes, and they eliminate the guarantee of a fair and equitable code of discipline. As such, they would go against the statute and not be constitutional. Second is our duty to provide an adequate education. RSA 193 E3B begins with this mandate. Using the input-based accountability system, a school shall demonstrate that it provides the opportunity for an adequate education. When these laws were mended in 2018, statutes made it clear that schools cannot do either input or output-based accountability. They must do both. The input-based system is mandated by law. The current regulations are constitutional. They fill in the details. They establish the inputs that every school shall provide for each of the eleven subject areas listed. The proposed regulations violate the Constitution. They subtract from current law. They take the word "shall" out and put the word "may" in for every single subject. That's over thirty to forty changes from a "shall" to a "may." As such, they violate the statutes, and they would be unconstitutional. Next, I'd like to look at legislative review. When they updated 541A, they added in a section that says, "If the legislature wants stricter requirements than a standard jail corps review, they can do so if they include it in the statute, and we must use those stricter requirements." When they wrote RSA 193E, they did exactly that. They had this section. "Changes made by the Board of Education to the school approval standards through rulemaking shall not be included within the standards that constitute the opportunity for the delivery of an adequate education without prior adoption by the General Court." If you're going to change these essential rules that say, "How do we meet our constitutional obligation? How do we satisfy the Claremont and the Londonderry decisions?" You have to get approval of the whole General Court. The legislative history of 193 supports this interpretation. They, all the legislative history talks about how this law is specifically answering the Londonderry case about what is an adequate education. They talked about the historic cooperation between the House and the Senate, the Democrats, the Republicans, and they had people from all over their state working together to write these guidelines. They did not want their hard work. They didn't want to go back to the Supreme Court. They didn't want their work to be unraveled by an administrative agency rewriting the rules in the future, and that's why they included that there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Are you submitting your release?
I just, again.
I already have it. Yes.
Thank you.
Dean Myske.
How you doing?
Good.
I'm good, man. I, uh, letting Dean test him. I gave the written test to him last thing, you know. I followed up with the world today. I'm retired. Well, at least I'm running a New Hampshire pension. I retired from Bo, Don Barton. Been in the state, uh, both public and private education all my life. A New Hampshire citizen. I'm now part-time, short-time in Grantham, two days a week. But I'm interested in the 306s. I just want to tell you, I love New Hampshire public education. I worked in both private, Carnegie Mountain School. I worked in a private Christian school. I led that. Uh, but I fell in love with public education, and I've dedicated my life to that. And you know what? I love competency-based education. I was around Fred Porter through the first time, and we worked like crazy to implement right competencies. How do you assess them? How do you run education in a competency-based system? It's hard. And it's been inconsistently implemented, no question about it. You know, we got local control. We never had, uh, like, a centralized version implemented. And it's tough, and there are some places implemented well, some places implemented poorly. But the minimum standards are more than that. I mean, Fred's great. I love him, but they're more than that. It's a tool for equity in public education. And I and others are very interested in seeing the draft standards come out, whether you're taking off the table and putting in the rulemaking, because devil is in the details, and these are very important rules for education, especially to work on equity and make sure that all students in New Hampshire have equal opportunity. Like I said, I love New Hampshire public education. Public and private education both have their place. We've always had a strong history of supporting public education and homeschooling in the state. But coming together to provide for the common good and create equal opportunity for success in public education is where I've kind of landed on. And I'm just gonna keep coming to these meetings and listening to the debate, and I'm really interested in making sure that the 306s continue to provide equal opportunity for students in the state. Thank you very much.
All right, Steve, you know I'm gonna put your name.
Kosczyk. Kozakoski, yeah.
Kozakoski.
Yeah. Sorry, Steve. My name is on there by mistake.
Oh, it's on by mistake? Okay. Okay, Adriana.
Good morning. I'm here to express how grateful I am for the Education Freedom Accounts. Uh, the program not only made an immediate positive impact for my daughters, uh, but a long-reaching one as well. The EFA has enabled, uh, my daughters to attend a private high school that respects their needs, uh, supports their talents, and grows their goals to their full potential. Uh, giving parents who know their children best the opportunity to choose their children's education path to become more educated young adults who learn how to think critically affects more than the immediate family. Uh, it is clear that, as a society, we are not moving in the right direction. There are many problems in our youth culture, and without many solutions presented in the government level. However, the program, the education, this program, the Education Freedom Account, is a light for a better future. It is a solution to course correct the direction of our education. Uh, the EFA programs is giving children these tremendous opportunities in their four to five years that can alter their lives. Um, and without these funds, I don't for myself and many others, this would be impossible. So when you're considering the EFAs and supporting them, I know it's a legislative level, um, but as the board, you do have some influence on that. If you would think generationally and long-term, um, not just short-term, I can't tell you how many families I have met, the impact that the EFAs have made, um, just within the school system, the private education. I can't be more grateful, because I, I saw where my children were directed, and having the funds has, um, changed their attitude towards school. Prior to that, they weren't thrilled at that point in school. Now they look forward to it every day, and the growth in the last two years has just been tremendous. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Liberty.
How you doing?
Hey, how are you?
Good. Before you press start, I have to pare this down a lot. Um, so, I, I hope I get an extra fifteen seconds or so to finish. I'm gonna need it, so. So, my name is Tom Liberty. I live in Boston, New Hampshire, and I speak to you today as a concerned citizen of the state. I have come here solely to represent my opinions. I speak for no one but me. My concern is with the Learn Everywhere program, especially now that PragerU's financial literacy course has become an approved program. I am not here to discuss PragerU's political positions. I sit before you to highlight the lack of pedagogical practices and cognitive engagement. I will use PragerU to illustrate my concerns with Learn Everywhere. I had several questions after the approval of the course. My questions included, do students write, read, solve a financial problem, collaborate, apply their learning, partner with a financial institution, or think critically? I was informed that these practices do occur. I decided to take the course for myself, and after one hundred and five minutes, I received a certificate of successful completion. PragerU offers fifteen videos that totaled seventy-six minutes and thirty-seven seconds. Each video had ten optional multiple choice and two false questions to check for understanding, and many can be seen later in the forty-question final exam. During the instructional time of the videos, I was never required or offered the opportunity to rewrite, solve a financial problem, collaborate, develop a deeper understanding, experience a partnership, or think critically. There are two widely-used cognitive complexity tools to guide instruction, Bloom's Taxonomy and Webb's Depth of Knowledge. The entire learning experience I engaged in with PragerU is at the lowest level of cognitive engagement for both Bloom's and Webb's. It involves recalling facts from memory without necessarily understanding or applying them. Students are not recorded, required to perform one higher-order thinking skill. To complete the entire financial literacy course, it will take a student about two hours. That's about three percent of the time a student would spend in a typical New Hampshire high school to earn a half-credit. If a student in a New Hampshire high school was able to earn this half-credit by attending two class periods and never had to read or write a word, it would be righteous indignation. And that's exactly what occurs with PragerU's financial literacy course. If PragerU was available option for all New Hampshire's minimum standard courses, a student could receive a high school diploma after eighty hours of video instruction and multiple-choice questions. Under Chapter 193E, the adequate public education law and state skills of analysis, critical thinking, and persuasion shall be part of instruction. It also calls for curriculum to be presented in broad pedagogical approaches and strategies. PragerU's financial class does none of this. Rather, this course minimizes learning, ill-prepares students' success in the real world, is insultive to expect so little of our students. I ask you to please reconsider the Learn Everywhere program to ensure students experience a high-out, a high-quality education to include a more demanding approval process, removing the requirement for schools to accept credits and to require a licensed instructor. Under the current conditions of Learn Everywhere program, we are lowering expectations and hurting kids. Please help New Hampshire to be in better for our students and go back to the expectations that have made New Hampshire a top-performing state in the nation. Thank you.
Janet Ward.
I'm Janet Ward from Kentuckahas. And I'm here to speak to the 306 revision process. A very deep concern of mine is that it has not been transparent. Um, as all of you know, the process has taken place largely behind closed doors because a contract with a private nonprofit, um, was signed. And so, uh, because there was much concern, public listening sessions, um, were scheduled. But the process itself is much like Education Freedom Accounts, where taxpayers are forced to pay for curriculum over which they have no oversight or control. And so it is with the EFAs. The public listening sessions, which have taken place, have given people like myself and others an opportunity to speak about their concerns. But as Fred Vermont, uh, the Chair of the, um, 306 Revision Process, has told everyone in those public sessions, he can bring concerns to the Commissioner and this board, but there is no guarantee that they will be incorporated into the revisions. So, um, there's no real opportunity for response. And at the conquered listening session, the Chair of the House Education Committee, Rick Ladd, was so taken back by much of what he heard that he requested that Fred come before the House Education Committee to discuss the process of the revision and to answer questions. I'll be there tomorrow, and I look forward to Mr. Vermont's responses. But, once again, um, the process is not transparent, and it is of great concern. And some of you here may have read the article the Union Leader published, which I wrote yesterday, which says, "Soon Commissioner Etteblut and the State Board of Education will be making decisions on revisions to the 306 administrative rules with which all public schools must comply. For details on 306 rule changes, you can visit the nonpartisan reaching higher New Hampshire website. Unless you have been carefully following the revision process, you would not understand how these changes would seriously undermine public schools by setting up conditions to outsource instruction to private companies and to further remove public oversight over taxpayer-supported education." So, I'm here to say that, um, in past revision processes, the process has been open to the general public and available for real input from citizens like myself. That is not happening during this revision process, and it's a matter of deep concern. So I think citizens who, um, are aware of what is happening should be present tomorrow at that House Education Committee at ten AM, Legislative Office Building, Room Two or Seven.
In fact, I just need a quick question before you leave. Do you mind if I ask you a question?
Not at all.
It's my understanding, I wasn't on the board when this first initial review process of the 306s happened before this one. But it's my understanding that the listening sessions that have taken place during this process have not only been in higher frequency. I believe that Fred has conducted maybe seventeen to eighteen listening sessions of which the public can attend. But I also knew that what you're describing is the process that any consideration comes before this board. In fact, the increased amount of listening sessions regarding this 306s, to my understanding, unless I'm wrong, is the most inclusive and transparent that it's ever been in the process of New Hampshire. Teachers have been involved. Administrators have been involved. In fact, he did multiple sessions in some of the largest school districts over the course of about nine months. And the idea that it isn't transparent, all of this is public meeting material, and there's also going through the process of turning over public consideration before we make any rulings. So I understand that there's a lot of, kind of, flavors of how we engage politically. But to hear that it isn't inclusive and isn't transparent, to me, seems like a mistruth, because it's actually the exact opposite. Am I missing something about my assessment of that?
Mr. Trumbull, I believe that you are.
What am I missing?
Um, if you, um, have you attended any of the public?
I've attended four.
Four?
Yes.
And so, in Manchester in particular, I think you went through.
Yes, I did.
And at each of them, um, Mr. Vermont has made very clear that all he can do is bring suggestions from the public before the Council and the State Board of Education.
So I just want to slow down. How is that not transparent? He's being honest with you in the fact that he's not the final decision-maker. His job is to gather all the feedback and present it to the board, which he's being upfrontly saying.
Right.
And in the listening session that I heard, Fred was not being combative. He didn't share any of his own political views or views toward education. In my experience, he outlined the context of what the discussion was. He engaged with, which sometimes was tough feedback about where he was going, and the team that he had took down all of that feedback of which he shared with all of us. So, I'm not trying to, like, confront you or anything. I'm really trying to understand how my perception is that this has actually been what the public has been asking for for a long time, being done, but now it's being attacked as the act of the opposite. So again, if he's doing that, what am I missing in that process?
Uh, Mr. Trumbull, did you listen to?
I did listen.
No, I know that you did. But did you listen to the first, uh, you know, uh, gentleman who came before you, David Trumbull?
I did listen, yeah.
And the critical, um, impact that those subtle changes, such as "may," but not "ah," or "must."
I respect, I respect the impacts that he's sharing and the impacts of any changes that anyone from the public comes and shares with us, as is Fred Vermont, when those feedback changes are requested to him, as he will share with all of us. So nothing is not being considered. Everything is being transparent and inclusive, again to my point, more than it ever has. I think the most meetings that, public sessions that 306s have ever had, was maybe like six or seven. Fred has had eighteen listening sessions over the course of nine months. So, my intention for this was not to combat you or to make a political statement. The point of this is that I'm, I know this board is open to feedback, and I know 306s are critical to the state of public education, but it's also not necessarily the most truthful to say that something is the exact opposite of what's actually happening, because that's what you're doing right now. It's the most inclusive and most open process that 306s have ever had.
Mr. Trumbull, you are spinning so much that has happened. Um, what, what is actually happening is, um, the changes that are being made are so subtle that for the general public, uh, they seem innocuous, but in fact, they are not. And so I'm here before you because I appreciate, because as a member of the League of Women Voters who support public schools, not public education per se, of course, I want all young citizens to be educated. But I want them to be educated in public schools that are transparent, whose curriculum is open to oversight and discussion. I don't want them to be in private settings where my tax dollar is being used to implement curriculum over which I have no oversight and no control. And so, for you to suggest that there are many, many, many public listening sessions.
Suggest? I'm simply telling you that.
Okay, I'm gonna cut this off. We're not having a conversation. This is public comment. Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Sorry about that. I'm, I'm sorry. I just had to engage. It's just, it's just not the truth. I'm sorry.
And I feel the same, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Meg Eba.
Hi, my name's Meg Eba. I live in Barrington, New Hampshire, where my husband and I are educating three children thanks to the Educational Freedom Account. I wish I had time to tell you about all of them, but I just want to talk to you about my oldest daughter, Liberty. She's sixteen and a half. And, um, because of the EFA, we use a hybrid approach, which is at-home instruction, it is, um, in, in-person classes at a private school, and also online classes, um, for her education. She's a gifted kid, so there's no sob story here. She's just, you know, she's a smart dance. And because of the EFA, there were three, um, really touchstone moments for her. The first was being able to afford to go to the UNH tech camp that they have on the Durham campus every summer, um, where she studied biotechnology, um, with a partnership with, um, RB Biotech in Manchester. She also was able to take, um, lab chemistry, honors lab chemistry at a private school nearby where we live. And, um, this year, she's using the EFA funds to take early college classes, which will enable her to take some Gen Eds and get them out of the way. So when she goes to college, she can just, um, kind of have some classes already done, which helps with finances, which is a big deal for us. These experiences, these three specifically, really solidified her desire to focus on biomedical education. She wants to be a doctor. I know, you know, when you say when you're sixteen, it might not actually happen, but that's her goal for now. And I don't know where she'll go to college, but I just want to let the committee know that she a hundred percent intends to return to New Hampshire to be a medical provider here. And the reason I want to mention that to you is because on October sixth, um, Ethan DeWitt wrote an article for the New Hampshire Bulletin entitled "New Hampshire Teachers Report: Quitting Over School Climate and Low Pay." And I just, I just kind of felt like this is, yeah, another, um, problem for which you'll have to find a solution. You have the 306s, you have the PragerU. You have a lot of problems. And the very last article, uh, very last line of the article by Rick Ladd said, "The shortage is starting right off. We have over half the students going outside the state and not returning to teach." And I just want to let you know that because of the EFA, all three of my children want to stay in New Hampshire. They want to work here. They want to live here. They're so grateful for the opportunity, as am I. And I need to let you know that of all the problems that you're facing, the EFA is not only not a problem, it is victory after victory after victory after victory. And I just want to thank you, but I also want to encourage you that this is a win. The EFA is a win. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's all I have for public comment. All right. So we're gonna move right along. We have next on our agenda, a non-public session. So, um, given the crowd, I think we can manage it if everybody would be kind enough to vacate to the back room. So we're gonna have to vote to go into a non-public session. We do a school administrative spotlight today. We'll avoid go to our EFA presentation, which we will hit to momentarily. I'm gonna move up to the rules, and this is just a logistical issue.
Oh, I really don't think we should do that now. She's gonna join us on, um, explicit flag. Julie's gonna reach us on, um, join us.
Well, yeah, no, but the conditional approval. If we do the conditional approval spots, then OLS can have it.
Okay, let me go find Julie.
Well, she, I don't think we need. Is everybody good with the conditional approval spots for the school facility approvals?
Yes.
Because it's, it's just, we're getting back to all of us on that. That's the only one I have that's conditional approval. So I just wanted to check that off and do a vote on that. And that way, that goes across the street, maybe gets back to us before the end of the day.
Just to make sure she's, um, oh, she's there. Okay, perfect. Okay, just want to make sure she's.
Yeah.
Close up. She's like sending it.
Yeah, so, um, can she hear me, Julie?
Uh, well, let me just.
She's listening to the meeting. I don't think she have a problem with that. I mean, there's nothing she gets to present on.
I'm just gonna bring her over just.
This makes it easier on her.
Yeah, I just want to make sure she can, uh, she has a camera, but she can at least, um, she'll be joining us just a second.
Just make sure Julie's in the room.
Yeah, she is.
Hey, Julie.
Hi.
Um, so we thought we'd do the conditional approval response, um, for school facility approvals right now, and that way, it can be in motion. Does that sound good? Okay, so.
I move that State Board of Education approved the conditional approval response ED 320.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. So we just want to dip that rule, get that in motion. And now.
I'll send that out.
Okay, thanks, Julie. We'll get back to you in a little bit.
Okay, well, we'll be back.
EFA update. Kate Baker Demers.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for having us today. I'm Kate Baker Demers. I'm the Executive Director of Children's Scholarship Fund in New Hampshire. We've been running our state's education tax credit program since 2013, and since 2021, we've also been running in conjunction with the Scholarship Tax Credit Program, our state's Education Freedom Account program. We haven't seen you, um, this board, since you approved our rules way back in, um, that summer of 2021. So we thought it would be, um, appropriate to come and give you an update about how the Education Freedom Account program is going. So we brought today, I have with me, um, Matt Southerston, who's our Director of Policy Compliance, and he'll walk you through how the program works. But I also have with me today Melissa Hagan, who's from Manchester. She's married to our husband Greg. Uh, she's a mom who's dedicated to her children's health. She has four children. I'll let you tell, her tell you a little more about them and her experience, but the reason I brought Melissa to meet you and talk to you today is she does, has her children in both public school, some of her children, and private school. And so I asked her to come and share a little bit about her experience. And then I also have Kelly, and I'll introduce her after Melissa shares with you her experience with the Education Freedom Account program and, um, her, about her family. So go ahead.
Hi, um, my name's Melissa Hagan, and I absolutely love the EFA program. Before the program, I, um, was homeschooling in Massachusetts due to the pandemic, and I couldn't afford any of the books or the curriculum, so I had to ask people on Facebook and family and friends to help. Um, but then I moved to New Hampshire, and I decided they need to go back to school. Um, I've been receiving the EFA program for two years now, and it needed possible for my two oldest children to be placed in an academy. And I never would have thought a mom like myself with a financial background would be able to afford a private school, but it worked out. My oldest kids need a little extra help academically, and in a smaller setting, um, it's building their confidence and they're able to thrive. My youngest two children, on the under, other hand, have type one diabetes, and they have to be, well, they are in public schools, and they love it. And there's a nurse there twenty-four-seven that's able to. And they love it, and there's a nurse there twenty-four seven that's able to take care of their needs. Um, and they're very well accepted, and it's amazing for them. But what this program has done for me and my family has provided financial freedom and peace of mind, and I am forever grateful. Thank you.
And then, um, I also have Kelly Santos, and she's from Hudson. Her husband's name's Neil, and he works at Smithy, we try to school. But I'm gonna let Kelly tell you about her family and how, um, the Education Freedom Account Program has impacted her life.
So thank you for the opportunity to speak today. So this is my book. This is my son, James. Um, he's twelve now, so this is an updated picture. But this is my binder that I brought to all of the meetings with the Hudson School District. So we're told as advocates for our children, we need to have a picture so that they know they're talking about an actual student, that there's a person behind all of the paperwork, right? And then we have to categorize all of the emails that we have with the school. We have to have writing samples that are going to plead your case. And we need to keep up on all of the laws. I needed to research the I D E A for my child, the child fine law. I had to work with Parent Information Center. I fought from when his first grade teacher referred him to special education because she didn't read anything he wrote. I fought during first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade. I had paid five thousand dollars for a neuropsych exam. I had a behavior pediatrician write a letter, his pediatrician write a letter. I had his teachers write letters. I fought to keep him with his community, with his friends, and that did not happen. They, at the public school, decided that he was not worth evaluating. All I was fighting for was an academic evaluation of my child, which the child law, fun, um, sorry, the child fine law states that the state must have a way to locate, identify, and evaluate all the children. Even if he's going grade to grade, even if it's not a severe disability, they need to do that by law. They did not do that for my child. Special education did not work for me because I could not get past step one, which is evaluation. So I'm fifth grade now and have a second child who also is showing signs of disability. And I need to find them a school. We've been through her remotely learning. I saw firsthand how my child struggles. And I said, I can't do it anymore to him. So now I have another one. I can't go through this fight anymore. I can't do it. Mentally, it's challenging me. So we applied to all of the charter schools in the area everywhere. We just not won that lottery. So now what? What do I do? I can't put them back into public school. I don't have a charter school for them. I can't afford private school. What do I do with these kids? And luckily, I did my research. I found the Children's Scholarship Fund. And at the same time, the stars aligned and the EFA came on board. So I was able to supplement our income enough to move them to Second Nature Academy in Nashua, where even it's in seventh grade, which James is there now, he receives two outdoor recesses a day. For a kid with ADHD, um, sensory processing disorder and a couple of learning disabilities, that's a big deal. It's a big deal. He also learns outside, but it is project-based. He is collaborating, and he is happy. He runs into school each day. But when I asked James, what's the difference between your old school and your new school, explaining that to me, he said to me, Mom, I was sitting in prison, and I was bored. The bars of the prison were boredom. And I was bored, bored, bored for years. And when I went to my new school, that was the key that let me out of jail. That's our experience. And if it wasn't for the EFA and the ETC programs, we would have been stuck without a school to go to. And now they are thriving, both of them. And the teachers speak to me about my children. The way that I speak about my children was love and understanding and acceptance. Where the public school spoke to me without having ever met my children, I needed to choose to, to them. They suffered this photo. It's different. And every EFA story is different. Please listen to our stories. They're important. Thank you for your time.
So we're gonna go down to Matt. Uh, Matt's the Director of Policy Compliance at Children's Scholarship Fund. He's just gonna go through for you the basics of how the program operates. Because I find that in general, it's hard to understand, you know, how does the family get the grant? How does the, the machinations of it work? And so I, I know you've just had a trying couple of hours of, of non-public. So we'll try and keep it brief. I'll, I'll tell Matt to, you know, do an overview instead of kind of, you know, a whole twenty-minute conversation. Um, but when he's done kinda just giving you the overview, then we'll just, we'll answer your questions and, you know, kinda happy to be here. So go ahead, Matt.
So we, we live and breathe this every day, and we love to answer questions. So I'll definitely try to speed through this. The Education Freedom Account Law was passed in two thousand and twenty-one, enabling families that earn three hundred percent of poverty line to be eligible for this program. In two thousand and twenty-three, the state legislature served increased that to three hundred and fifty percent of the poverty line. This enables families to, uh, earn a state grant of approximately forty-one hundred dollars based state adequacy, plus any qualifying differentiated aid that the student is eligible for. CSF is a five-one-three C charity scholarship organization, and we have been authorized by the state of New Hampshire to administer, to administer these grants. So the most important part of this program is who do we serve? We currently serve forty-two hundred and eleven students in New Hampshire in grades K through twelve. Approximately forty-four percent of the students in this program are free and reduced lunch eligible. That's, that's very important. Um, this is the first time that many of the students in this program have had access to items that, that we take for granted every day. You know, I've seen students that have never had access to a computer, uh, be able to do their homework on it now. You know, they, they're, they have access to new books. They have access to funds for a tutor in the, in according to all their subjects. It's just amazing. I've personally worked with families that have lost their homes right before the beginning of the school year, and these, these people are in crisis and trauma, and these poor kids are wondering if they're gonna lose, um, access to their school. And the EFA has, has provided the supports necessary for them to continue their education in that school during an uncertain time. It's, it's just amazing. I'm, I'm sorry if I get a little emotional. Eligibility for the program, students, in order to qualify for the program, EFA families need to meet certain criteria, and they must agree to certain conditions. The parent of the students must be New Hampshire residents. The student must be eligible to enroll in the student's resident public school district. In the first year of the, of the program, the household must not exceed three hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty guidelines. Uh, no income threshold must be met in subsequent years. And parents must reapply annually and sign the attestation and certification statements. And they must agree to provide record of educational attainment by July fifteenth. Activity to date, so to date, since the program started in November of two thousand and twenty-one, we have approved over fifty-six thousand EFA orders. Approximately eight percent of the total EFA orders are, have been rejected for one reason or another. You might, so for example, you might have an order with fifteen items on it, and one order just happens to have an item that was accidentally a, a personal item, right? And unfortunately, we have to reject it because we can't edit the card and, and, and it, it doesn't allow us to reject, to, to edit the card and remove single items.
You can't, you can't itemize what you're rejecting.
Exactly. We can't remove single items at that time, but we are.
Why would we like that in New Hampshire? It's like all or nothing.
Right, it's, the technology hasn't quite caught up.
Exactly. And we're, we're working with the vendor, and hopefully that will be in a patch in the future.
Okay.
So that, I mean, that would, that would decrease frustration on our processor's part and on the family's part, right? So that would be a great improvement.
Can I just take that moment, since we're on that topic, just to ask, maybe to, to explain a little bit about how the group, uh, the allowable items work? We hear a lot from, uh, critics about, um, in other states, oh my gosh, they're spending money on, you know, personal things or whatever. So how does the vetting process work? Uh, what's allowed? And how do you guys, when they have, when these applications or seats, wherever they are, come to you? How do you make sure it's for approved products and services?
That's a great question. So, so, and thank you for it. The law has fifteen allowable categories. And then what we have done internally, we, we've, we've created an internal process for review that has nine different questions that I'd be happy to go through our process that we review for each individual order. We have human eyes on each order, you know, we don't use AI, we don't, we don't use any of that. So when, when a, when a staff member views an order in the queue, their first question is, is the, is the education service provider approved that they're purchasing the item of a service from? If yes, go to the next question. If not, then initiate the EFA education service provider review process. Is the expense for the child's individual educational use? We have to remember that EFAs are individual grants for the child made on the account. They're not, they're not family accounts, right? And they can't, and those funds can't be shared with others. Uh, number three, is the item a computer? We have to adhere to ed eight hundred rules, one computer every three years. If it is, then we log that computer. We track that. Question four, if applicable, what is the core knowledge subject area? And on the order, we'll note that, um, you know, whether it's a math book, core knowledge mathematics, reading, you know, English, science. Uh, has the, has the invoice bill or statement been used in another order? So say we receive a, uh, it's a reimbursement order for tuition, and we will receive the, the receipt. Our, our order processes will go back through there and make sure that that has not been used previously, or if it has, is there, is there still, um, is there still a balance on there that, that we, that we owe them essentially, that can still be reimbursed? Um, is the, is the item on the list of prohibited items? Obviously is. We wouldn't, and we try to work with them to try, try to find an alternative.
So can you just give us an example, like what, what would be some prohibited items?
Prohibited items, uh, knives and stabbing weapons, you know?
I hope so.
Um, a jet ski, that, a lot of critics try to bring up these really outlandish, like outlier.
Lifestyle products.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Home, 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 home products, you know, personal care products, that sort of stuff. You know, quite frankly, um, most of the items that have been rejected are just, they're just really boring items. You know, it's like, they accidentally put toilet paper on the, on the, on the order. It's really just.
So, and, and so Amazon is an approved provider, right?
Amazon is a approved provider, right?
So somebody, just to, just so we understand, right? So somebody can say, uh, I'm gonna go get, um, all my kids' school supplies.
Exactly.
Um, and I'm on Amazon, so I'm gonna throw in the toilet paper or whatever, not realizing that that is a whole order that goes to you, and they can't, so.
Exactly. We all, we all use Amazon, and they just, you know, they're, they're, you know, trying to buy their students' school stuff, and then they just forget about it and then put something on there that's not allowable.
Yeah, I think that the point to, to both of your discussions, you know, the list of allowable things includes tuition.
Yes.
Textbooks, supplemental materials, right, classes and courses, transportation if you're going to and from a provider, career tech ed classes. And so what we've noticed and seen to Matt's point is that families do exactly what you think they're going to do, right? They pay for classes, courses, online ed, textbooks, curriculum. So I think to your point, Chairman Klein, focusing on the stuff that people are saying in other states, in our experience, it's really quite, um, regular. You know, it, it's exciting to see families do what we call unbundling, where they may choose, like you heard from Megan, and Megan, the public comment, I know that was quite a while ago that you heard from her now, but you remember she told you she's using a school for her child's chemistry class, online provider for a, a different class. And then she's buying the curriculum and, and textbooks for a different class, and then choosing a college course for, right? And so that's really what we've seen come through the digital wallet, we call it, right, which is where the grant sits. I'm wondering, Matt, if you can, I know that because of Chairman Klein's question, you skipped ahead. But can you just go back and share with them the three ways that families can use their grant once it's awarded? Because I think this will become clearer if you just review.
The three methods.
The dollars, the adequate education grant amount for the family comes to us. It goes in the digital wallet in the child's name. The parent is the one that has access and of course, that responsibility over it. But once it's sitting there, there's three ways that the family can use it mechanically now, remember, we're talking about not what's allowable. We know what's allowable. This is how it works mechanically, and I think that will help to clear up kind of what you're talking about, so.
And this is really exciting for audit tracking when the auditors come in. Well, I know, I'm the boring rules guy. I'm sorry.
That's the stuff that matters.
Yeah, yeah, right? So I'm the boring rules guy. Um, anyway, there's three methods of spending EFA funds. Parents can use the marketplace orders. So what, what is the marketplace? Class Wallet has cultivated relationships with dozens of education providers and Amazon. And what they do is they provide a service where the parent can log into Class Wallet account and, uh, and basically, uh, peruse the websites of those, of those different providers and purchase education, EFA allowable items. EFA, uh, they obviously can't purchase everything off Amazon, but only EFA allowable items, and use their student's EFA account, purchase it directly from the, the student's account. Therefore, what? We eliminate out-of-pocket expenses for these families. These are the families that we're trying to serve. And again, it creates the audit trail.
Right, and Staples is in there, as you said.
Staples is in there, yeah, a lot of different.
So you need to buy your laptop.
Right.
You don't need to go to a store or, you know, use the reimbursement. You can shop online right in your child's digital wallet. Yes.
Exactly, family.
Yes, and you're, you're in the wallet, and you're also on Staples' website at the same time.
So the wallet itself is the gateway to the marketplace, almost like, um,
That's right.
how digital currencies work, where you need a wallet to actually give you access to the marketplace.
That's right.
It's almost the key in that sense, and then you process your orders through that digital marketplace, and the wallet exchanges the funds available in the wallet directly to the individual. There's no, um, outside the marketplace activity.
There's even a cooler thing about that loop is, remember that Matt said that humans are looking at everything. So once you're, you're on Staples, you, you choose the computer that your child needs, you put it in the cart. It's a closed loop, and that's what comes to our team to look at before the transaction goes anywhere. So we're seeing that computer, we're logging it, if it's, you know, your one computer you've got in three years or, you know, whatnot. And then once we say yes to the transaction, then it goes through.
You're the verification of the purchase.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
Goes right into the order of approval.
Yes, and, and that, that closed loop is the same way that, that, that directly paying a provider, like a New Hampshire provider that we've added, works also, so hit that one.
Oh, direct pay is excellent as well, so. Direct pay is, is, is similar. Uh, direct pay enables folks that have, um, relationships with, say it's a non-public school, a private school, or maybe they have a relationship with a tutor, they, they're sending, they're sending their, their students to a tutor. It allows the tutor or the, the private school to send the parent an invoice. The parent uploads the invoice into Class Wallet, creates an order, a direct pay order, and they can pay that provider directly from the student's EFA, again, eliminating the need for, for an out-of-pocket payment and creating an audit trail.
And it still needs to be approved.
And it's, well, thank you so much. Sorry. No. I, I'm new at this.
So now we've made it sound really complex. You guys.
No, it's actually very simple.
Well, so for me, we get, we get an email that says that the EFA funds are there. We log into Class Wallet. I go by child. So, um, I, I asked the school to send me an invoice for the year, so that's my invoice that I use for each payment because it does come in increments. So, um, and the school is really great because the increments don't start till actually long after the tuition is actually due. So they do kind of flex the rules for the EFA families. And so when that money comes into Class Wallet, I go in and find my school. I say, I wanna pay tuition. It has to go to tuition. I have to write what it's for. I have to show the invoice. And then I wait, um, I shut it off. I wait for an email that says it's approved, and then I let the school know, okay, that your fund should be coming soon. And then I get another confirmation. It has been confirmed, and then I know the money has been sent.
And you just upload it.
For anybody, um, watching or listening, if you were confused about how cryptocurrencies work, this is essentially the same mechanism, where you have a digital wallet that gives you access to certain marketplaces. The digital wallet is the key that allows you to get inside the digital marketplace. You do all your transactions within the marketplace using the currency that you have. In this case, it's gonna be actual tax dollars and dollars. And then the actual verification method is done within the blockchain, as I'm sure all of you have heard. In this case, the blockchain. In this case, the blockchain is human eyes looking to verify the transaction and then you stay all within the portal and it's all verified. That's the same ecosystem and mechanics of how digital currencies work, if anybody cared to get that.
Now I don't understand it at all.
So, so our third method is reimbursement. Uh, reimbursement allows parents to, yeah, again, purchase an, uh, EFA allowable educational item for their students, uh, upload a copy of the receipt, it, it, it must contain, you know, certain required fields. Those are located on page number nineteen of our parent handbook. They're, they're simple, you know, uh, provider name, full date, date of the invoice, month, day, year, student's name if applicable, description of the item or service and the amount due, or if, or, or in the case of reimbursement, it would be the, the date paid and the amount paid. Um, again, this allows those parents, um, to, to utilize a provider that's, that might not have, they, they signed up, they completed step one of the registration process, so they vetted that provider. However, they have not completed step two, which is creating a class wallet account and verifying their banking account, for whatever reason, right? So, uh, it still allows them to utilize those.
And as an example, when we first started the program, if you're a New Hampshire approved private school, right, non-public school, on your, you guys do the approval of, of non-public schools. If you're an approved non-public school in New Hampshire, then you're allowed to be in the EFA program, we could approve you. And so we were able to add all of the New Hampshire non-public schools just right out of the gate as families could use them. Whether or not those schools sign up in Class Wallet for the direct payment, a family could still, you know, pay their tuition and get reimbursed using their EFA, even if we hadn't been able to onboard them completely into the closed loop. The other thing that's been useful for is that families can also use this money to pay for classes and courses or out-of-district public schools. And sometimes their constraints are such, or, you know, that we're like, okay, can, can you get added in Class Wallet? It might take them a little bit longer to finish that whole loop of making it possible for their public school district to appear in Class Wallet for a direct pay. But again, because they're an approved New Hampshire public school, we're able to add them to our approved list right away so that a family could use their EFA at least as reimbursement. So that's how that, um, having reimbursement available has been helpful to families to increase the options that are available to them. We can make, using it as a, as a provider, as soon as we vet them, um, allowable and, and at least move it forward for the family so they can use the money at, at that. So, uh, in addition, that's required by, by the law.
Outside of those use cases, I'm guessing that most families choose to just shop within the marketplace and not have the reimbursement.
Right.
Because I'm imagining that it's the upfront cash payment, that cash flow issue that becomes the actual problem with moving forward.
Absolutely, definitely, it's, it's faster, it's cleaner.
Well, and like Matt mentioned, I mean, forty-four percent of the kids are free reduced lunch income level people. And so when you're in that income bracket, you don't have money to put forward to pay something to get reimbursed. And so, um, we do have an employee who spends most of her time, um, working to onboard providers and vet them because it is much easier for a family if the provider gets into that closed loop and can be paid directly through the program instead of having to do the reimbursement. So we do invest a lot of time and energy. We actually are up to, um, one thousand, one hundred education service providers now that have signed up that we've approved for the families to be able to use them. So it really includes, you know, lots of public school districts have gotten onboard, um, all the adult ed centers, the career tech centers, every, you know, private school that you can think of. I know that there's children attending programs right here at the Planetarium. There's tutors all over the state, there's microschools popping up that families are going to, there's learning pods, there's, I mean, it's, it's amazing. And the other fun thing that we've noticed is, um, to that use case, in the beginning of the program, when, when families began, just started using it, um, it started that the, the amount of dollars, the total dollars going to pay, uh, private school tuition was close to seventy percent of the total spending. And now it's actually down closer to about sixty percent. So as families use the program more, they begin to do as Meg described earlier today, they begin to find and, and make the education dependent on their child specifically, and they call that, again, we call that unbundling. And I've noticed over time, the trend is that as the families understand how the program works, they begin to see that there are more opportunities and that they can choose more and different opportunities. And then that in fact happens, and you can see it right in the data where families move towards that unbundling, meaning choosing different providers for different types of expertise or again, the preferences of the individual learner. So that's been really interesting and, and fun to see.
Cause probably new for those families to think about learning coming from multiple sources.
Of course.
Than just one school location dedicated sitting down.
Yes.
So it's just them to kind of naturally seem like, oh yeah, this also looks like learning as well, just not in a traditional sense. So it's them just kind of learning what the program was intended to do. That's encouraging.
For, um, homeschooling, for that, I know that, say, if you're homeschooling, you don't, you don't know how to play piano, but your child is really interested in that, and then you can utilize those EFA funds for music lessons, which, you know, would be something, you know, their peers in public school are using. So it's very similar to, um, finding the right teacher for that subject. So it may be a science program like MECAD, but it might be, um, Spanish, it might be something else and it's just something that isn't in the warehouse of the parent, but would be accelerating that child's learning. So they're utilizing those funds not just for math curriculum, but for music curriculum or for science curriculum or wherever that, um, student is at that time, is that what you said?
Oh, absolutely, very cool. It's like the given menu versus the buffet. With the buffet, you just get to go up and choose what you want and whatever.
But it's almost just like equalizing, right? Where it, you know, if you're a low-income parent and you're spending most of your money in a market basket and, but you want to provide a similar education to their peers, um, but your child isn't someone who can sit in a brick and mortar building and you need to say, how am I spending my home education dollars? And you're looking at the child who, who would benefit from a particular Orton-Gillingham curriculum. Or you're looking at, can I afford music lessons? You know where your dollars are going. But then if you infuse that family with forty-five hundred dollars, wow. What opportunities can they have then? Where else can they, can they buy a math curriculum to go with the Orton-Gillingham curriculum and still get those music lessons in there? Now, this is a whole different world. And, you know, I was at a little hearing and, and it's not really my story to talk, but I will tell it anyway. There's a woman who had a elementary school child, I believe he was less than ten years old. And while he was in the brick and mortar school, the police were being called on him. He was being, you know, restrained at school and having difficulty and had to parole out. So that's not what that child needed in order to have a free, an appropriate education. What he needed was a different setting. He needed to be homeschooled. He needed to have one-on-one attention because of whatever his personal needs were. And that mom has that option because of the EFA. And if that child is just focusing on himself and that mom can have a few extra brain cells to focus on him instead of her finances, that's what the EFA is doing. It's forty-five hundred dollars for these low-income, moderate-income families who need the help. You know, we need to send our children to a school and it helps to offset that cost that we can provide other things for our families such as, you know, communication and, you know, electricity. But it's really, when you are looking at, you know, a family with four children, you have to, you know, that cost was up and up and up. And we are just trying to provide education for our children.
Can you finish up, Matt? I know you've got a couple more things to add.
Sorry, I'm a little interrupted.
Oh, no, please, I, I love it.
It's okay, we're taking up a lot of your time, so can you finish up?
No worries.
Yeah.
I think I, I would just, I would just point to the oversight, is that what you're saying, right? So CSF is a state, has a state-approved contract to administer the EFA program. NHED conducts performance monitoring of the EFA program. CSF submits required reports to NHED on an ongoing basis, including the beginning-of-year report for A O Ys, anytime-of-year reports and an end-of-year report. These are the same reports that traditional public schools and charter schools submit to, to NHED. Um, CSF also provides NHED with EFA student enrollment, uh, expenditure data broken down by cost category and vendor on an annual basis. CSF and the EFA program are overseen by the Legislative Oversight Committee. CSF attends all Legislative Oversight Committee hearings as required by law. Uh, to brief the committee and answer any questions, uh, I believe that the Legislative Oversight Committee will release its report in November. Uh, we also, uh, have a risk-based program audit, um, performed on an annual basis. CSF engages an independent third-party accounting firm to do this. Uh, CSF files Form 990, publishes annual reports, it is a four-star rated charity on Charity Navigator. This is obviously the highest possible rating that a nonprofit can attain for accountability and transparency. So, uh, obviously, we are welcome, we love answering questions. I love doing webinars with the parents. We received, uh, I think it was like a hundred questions last time, so we're gonna do another one in November.
Thanks for that presentation, uh, do you, how do you think? I don't know if you have a written presentation or something?
We send all this to, did you?
I could get a copy of it off today, so I'll.
We sent you the parent handbook.
Yep.
We sent you the information about the ways that the families can use the money in Class Wallet. We sent you this presentation as, as we discussed it. And we also sent you, um, the category breakdown of all these factors.
Great, I just wanna make sure that gets, like, posted with the.
Yeah, the public materials too, I'll just add those too, cause I didn't even post it, I know everyone's anxious to see them.
Sure.
Um, just for our viewing audience, uh, so if you're a family that is poverty level to three hundred percent.
Fifty percent, fifty.
Three fifty of poverty level. Your children, wherever they attend school, are eligible for a.
That's right, the legislature designed the program for any child, the eligibility is any child who could otherwise attend their, um, residentially assigned public school. So any child that's eligible to go to the door of the public school and sign up could go to the door of our program and sign up. The thing that they put was, yes, the income limits, three hundred and fifty percent of the poverty line or below. So it's low and moderate income families that are eligible right now.
Per child.
Um, it's family income qualification, yeah, so that it's just like the free reduced lunch income qualification, it's household income. So it's for a family, all of their, you know, it might be their food stamps or.
I was saying the funds are per child though, so in theory, they could have a, a family that one child goes to a traditional education route and one child is partaking in that year, right?
Melissa, yeah, that's right, like Melissa's family, she has two, two, two children that go to their neighborhood public school and love it and two kids that go to private school and they use EFA for their.
And they get EFA there.
So could a student who goes to your neighborhood public school use the EFA in any capacity, as a supplement?
So the, the only way they could do that is if the EFA child was enrolling in individual classes or courses. And then, and then the school district may have them pay for those classes and courses. Um, in, in, when a child chooses this, the, being full-time in your resident district would mean that the state would pay your adequacy dollars, right, your state money to your public school. And so you couldn't get it in your EFA if you were getting it paid already to your public school.
Thank you.
It's a little bit challenging, the financial mechanism of this, because the way they designed the law is if you leave your public school, the money actually doesn't go with you. They still pay the public school, the Department of Ed, um, for the first year, a hundred percent that you're gone, for the second year, fifty percent, and for the third year, twenty-five percent. And the legislature did that because they wanted to make sure that the public schools could adjust to any amount of children that might fluctuate. Although I think that from what we're seeing, and I, I don't wanna call the program we run small, but the program we run is small, so it's still only.
In the scope of children going to traditional public.
Yes, it's still only one or two percent of the student population. It's still, I think, within the percentage of students that might move between any schools anyway. And so we're not seeing any negative impact in that regard. So the legislature creating that payment for the public school after a child leaves, I, I don't know if that was necessary, but it was a nice way to try and make sure that, you know, or so that they could study the impact of the fiscal impacts of the, the program.
But thank you for that, because that's, that's almost a freebie.
I actually get no funding from my youngest two, um, of course my oldest two. Yeah, I only have the two oldest in the program and they're the only two that get any.
I kind of think of it the opposite. All the public school children get the EFA fund then, right? And when the, when, like, when we leave this piece of it, we have, we now have access to it. But that, like, everybody, all the children in the state have access to those funds. It's just being utilized differently, right? So the public school children are getting the EFA funds already, they're just under a different name on the books. So then when we say pick for, uh, private school, it is just a different, now it's just a different line item on the books, but it's the same dollars.
Can you tell?
Well, it's hard to understand, but if you flip it around, like, you know, it, it's, it's kind of flipping it around. It's that, and all of New Hampshire students are getting the same fund. It's just how is it being distributed, under what leave, under what line mandate? Does that make more sense?
Oh, yeah, we have, okay.
More questions for us, anyone? Okay, great, well, thank you for that.
Thank y'all for sticking around, thanks for hanging around, appreciate it. We're at work, thank you.
Good afternoon, uh, how they are, Charter School Office with Chief Consec House in the virtual academy, otherwise known as V-Lax.
That'd be in the hot seat too.
This is for their five-year renewal. Steve, your show.
Good afternoon, everybody. Steve Posakowski, CEO, and I'd also like to introduce Michael Garen, who's in finance, and Carrie Blines, who is chair of our full-time program. And also, we're in here somewhere, Tony Valdezaro in operations. We just opened, uh, moved to new offices and, um, our, our general contractor selected today to be the day to, um, to have a fire department in to check this, fire system to maybe permission to do certain things. So he had to step out for a minute to make sure that. So I'd just like to say a few things and then answer whatever questions might have. Been around for fifteen years, um, times certainly have flown by. And we've continued to grow almost every single year, nearly those fifteen years. We now annually work at about ten thousand students in grades K through twelve. We also have our own, um, self-funded adult education program. We, um, by self-funded, I mean people pay tuition to, to come to that. We also, most years have, by the end of the year, have about, um, three hundred full-time students in grades K through, through twelve. And last year, we had a hundred and sixty graduates. As a matter of fact, we, uh, usually have graduations here in, uh, in Concord at the Center for the Arts and we brought that, we released in Manchester next year to the Doubletree Hilton, the former Amory. And, um, we're also going to expand that because we're going to include not only our high school graduates, but our sixth grade completers, I mean, our eighth grade completers and our fifth grade completers. So we're making it into a graduation celebration and having lots of friends and family there. I think when, when we, when I think about V-Lax is, one of the most important things is our, our model of learning. We call it customized learning. Students are in charge of when, where, how they learn based on their interest in channels. And for some kids, that means they want a traditional course. For many though, they get the opportunity to do things like, uh, learning, um, learning to write with a poppy writer or maybe, uh, spending time with an engineer or pursuing an interest or a passion. Our kids are not just online, they also are encouraged to explore careers through a number of avenues. Over the last five years, we've awarded just over ten thousand, um, career badges, many of which, uh, include, um, time with people in the industry. We have ongoing partnerships with businesses, about two hundred right now. Who may come to us, uh, in a virtual world and provide us. They come to us in a virtual world and provide a session where a kid gets to that beginner level singer they could does. Or maybe talking to a professional singer at the high school level. But then, we try to push them out and go to job shadows and do other things out there so that, in our world, we do look at, that we have the ultimate amount of flexibility. We don't have to worry about bus schedules and all these other things. Things can happen for kids online and do other things that make sense to them. Our kids go to, our full-time kids go to colleges of their choice, from iG to community colleges and everything in between. We've, we really are proud of the work that our instructors do. We tell them that their number-one job is to build relationships with kids in the families. And when our folks call home, it's not because it was an issue today, it's because that's what they do all the time. And so, when they have an interaction with a parent, maybe the puppy was sick last week, how's the puppy doing? Are you going to the Red Sox game? Whatever, just because it's a different, it's not necessarily better, it's just different than a traditional setting. Also very proud of the work we did during the pandemic. One of the calls I received was from the commissioner who said, can you help us out?
Go to Steve.
We have a lot of kids in grades K through three coming through. And at the time, you were, you were trying out grades four and five, and you said, can you help us? And so, within about two months, we put together K through three and opened up full-time sooner or after the K through five. The other thing that we did, and I'm very proud of our staff for this, is we worked with about three thousand five hundred educators, providing them with free professional development. Because all of our brothers and sisters in the traditional world are moving into our world, if you will, overnight. And so, we said, well, we have some extra seats there. You know, we were doing simple things like how do you use Zoom and these online gadgets, but also, how do you move from a competency-based environment that's face-to-face to online? And so, I think we really did provide a type of service to the state. We are a comprehensive school need improvement this year. What was a little bit interesting and a little bit frustrating is the fact that we allow kids to have the time to master competencies. And what that means is that in the four years, if you still have competencies to master, you get that time. While the feds say, that's great, but they really aren't addressing the time. They're saying, we expect at least sixty-seven percent of the kids to graduate within a four-year period of time. And last year, we did sixty-six point something. And, and so, this year, we've already made changes. We're gonna, that's going to be lifted. We're probably gonna be over seventy percent. But what our goal is, is not to change the four-year, it's to always meet the average for the state at the five-year level. Because, yes, we'd like kids to have the ultimate flexibility and take six years if they want to, occasionally do, but we know the majority of kids are going to finish within five years. So, those that might need an extra summer to complete the competencies, that's usually what happens, is in the summer, they do, but if they need more time, if they haven't. One of the things we also found, and I'll stop here in a second, this Carrie provided some information, is that we're getting a lot of juniors and seniors who are coming to us with significant deficits. Like a year or more behind. And the worst thing you wanna do for that kid is say, guess what, we want you to finish everything up within six months so that you can make the four-year goal. They really need another year or so, and we've been successful with those kids, but, you know, when you look at four-year graduation, it doesn't necessarily look good. Carrie, you wanna say a little bit more about what you're running there and your approach?
Sure. To Steve's point, you know, we, we did a deep dive, really some data mining into our twenty-twenty-two cohort. Where we arrived at the sixty-six point sixty-seven percent, right? Was, was under the sixty-seven. And what we found was that of our hundred and sixty students in that cohort, close to sixty percent of them had not arrived at V-Lax until probably ten, eleven, grade ten, eleven, twelve. And about twenty-five percent of that population of students came to V-Lax at least a year or more behind. The, the good news is, is that they're finishing in five years, right? They're not finishing in that four-year timeframe, but they're finishing in that five-year timeframe. So, and, and, you know, the, the data, which I know you all have, our five-year graduation rates tend to be higher than the state average typically. We allow that time for the students to complete. They're motivated to do so. And so, this year, what we've done is we've developed some pretty robust cohort monitoring systems that are allowing us to provide more proactive student support and get students in front of the individualized supports that they need earlier. So that we are hoping to increase that four-year to remain above that sixty-seven percent mark. But also, not compromising the ability for students to take that extra time up to that five years that they need it. Because for some of these students, they are, particularly the students who are arriving at V-Lax behind already their cohort, their O G Y. They are some of our most vulnerable students, and pushing in to accelerate that program, once they arrive at V-Lax, is probably the worst thing you could do for their student success and their learning potential. So, we found some great success in that this year. To Steve's point, we're anticipating a pretty large jump in our four-year grad rate, even between twenty-two and the twenty-three cohort. And anticipate that we will continue to look at the data and work with our students to continue to keep that at, at what we believe is a really successful four-year average for the students that we serve.
I just wanted to add, I understood your application, with all that you heard about remote learning, virtual learning during the pandemic. I was expecting to see some of your participation numbers be lower than they were. So, I was pleasantly surprised, but they were quite high and usually higher than state averages. How, given your cohort and what you're just talking about, with some of the students who come to you, and I know that's been a regular thing for V-Lax, is getting students who come to you already by time. Yeah, your participation scores are pretty good. How does that, how do you get that to happen?
One of the things that plays here and doesn't give us quite enough, which I, I just wanna accept a compliment, but I'm gonna push back and say...
Okay, great, yeah. I want the accurate info.
So, as you know, in the state of New Hampshire, the parent has the right to decide if a student will take the state test or not.
Okay.
If you're in a traditional school, it's more likely that you're going to take a test because you go to school every day, and you wanna be with your cohort of kids, and you probably don't wanna go to the library while they're taking it. You get a higher percentage rate, and they do a great job of doing it. We get people with kind of a different feeling that, well, why are we taking this test if we really want to? So, we've had, during the pandemic, some really low participation scores, like thirty, forty percent. And so, in many cases, you're going to get people who are more driven students, successful coming to you. Now, I don't wanna take it all the way, they're still doing well, but...
You're ahead of value, but you are...
But, but there's some...
Self-selection.
Yeah, there's, there is another reason there, too, so I just wanna be a part of it.
I appreciate that very much.
We offer several testing sites around the state, right, centered around the V-Lax. So, we're on the seacoast, we're in the western part of the state, we're centered a little bit here in the area of Concord. But what it means, the, the, the other factor for students coming to the testing if they want to is that it, it in many cases, the parent has to take time off from work to drive their student to the testing location. It is multiple days. So, there's a, there's a greater investment in the testing.
More buying, yeah.
Right, it requires more buying, and it's, it's, it's a greater investment on the family's part to get their...
It's actually a disruption to the hope in this day, right?
Yes.
So, in a traditional public school, you go to school, find a, you go to school, you take tests, it's no different than any other day in terms of your logistics for your family, but for you, it doesn't have a burden.
Right. This S testing does allow, we lead the students to test at the local school district. So, we're hoping in the next couple of years, for those families for whom the travel is a limited piece, that we can encourage them to, to test locally as V-Lax students.
Yeah, that would be helpful. And they'll, if, so if you do that, they're marked as a V-Lax student in every one of those schools, so it's not gonna skew the local schools.
Correct.
Gotcha. Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, my son took a Latin class in V-Lax. He was even two thousand and two, eight or nine. I'm not sure how much early from that you started to quote.
Oh, eight or nine, one of them started.
Yeah, so he, he, he was right there with your first cohort, and we didn't have Latin in our public school, and, and we begrudgingly took it because the mother wanted to, but... I'm curious, what kind of marketing can we do? Because we can all assume that everyone knows that V-Lax exists, but not everybody might, and know that that's an alternative for their student to fill a gap in their education, or just as a viable alternative.
I think it's a really good question, and it's something we pay a lot of attention to. Our belief, number one, is word of mouth, even in this digital age, is a big deal. And we talk a lot about customer service, and I don't wanna say we're perfect, but it goes along with that idea of relationships. Because if Carrie's a parent and has a good, her student has a good time, then she's going to tell a lot of people. She doesn't have a good, a good time there, in chance she's gonna tell even more. In fact, that's what the business research says, that is something like, you'll tell three people if you have a good experience, you're likely to tell seven to eleven people if you have a negative experience. And, you know, whether you go to Allarm or wherever you're going to. So, that's one piece. We also are very active on social media. We also do a lot of work with, with schools. We have a director of partnership who works very hard to help schools. Like, right now, we're getting a lot of schools calling us saying, I can't find a chemistry teacher to help me out from under two while we're looking. And we have all these kids who don't have a chemistry teacher to help us, and so, we do that. Also, we, we do a lot with digital newsletters for parents. We basically, when a parent gives their email, they're going to get an email from, I mean, their email address, they're going to get a newsletter from us that tells us, it tells them about what's going on. We do advertise on Facebook. We just finished off our media campaign, which was W N U R, a number of cable channels, public radio, three or four radio stations. And so, we've been doing that for many years. We don't do that, we can't afford to do that constantly, so we usually do it August, September, and then just after the holidays, and then again around April and June. Reason for that is you get a lot of people either gearing up for next year, or they're looking for something for the summer. But you're right, it's, as often as I will be in the supermarket overhearing a conversation about V-Lax, I'm also likely to hear people say, what's a V-Lax? So, not everybody knows. What's a V-Lax? I've heard anecdotally just a lot of mention of V-Lax, as you hear conversations about education around the state, and you are kind of the O G learning model in this way. So, I, I think that the word of mouth, like you said, is, is definitely there. I hear about V-Lax a lot, and a lot of success stories, like you mentioned.
Anybody else?
I moved at the State Board of Education approved the renewal of Virtual Learning Academy Charter Public School. It's a charter.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And... Oh, yeah, it says on the agenda...
No amendment today. He'll probably be back next month.
Oh, okay.
Tried to see a secret. I didn't do that.
Yeah. It wasn't in the packet, so I assumed it was a holder. All right. Tim. National Community Music School. We bring in anybody yet?
Uh, Lindsay.
Her name's Alvin. She's on, she's... Clover had to leave to teach.
She probably didn't think she would be coming on at two twenty-five, so...
Music lessons are starting.
Yeah, exactly. She would be playing music, like, all right, sounds good.
I just found her, and she just said, oh, good. I guess I can start.
So, for the record, Tim Carney, Administrator of Educational Pathways for the Department of Education. And before they requesting the board's approval of the National Community Music School Learn Everywhere initial application for one year. And Lindsay will be available.
Move along, or here she is.
To answer any questions the board may have.
Lindsay, can you hear us okay?
Yes. I don't have any questions except, would you retire your Learn Everywhere tag? It's the second, it's the second time.
Oh, my God.
I like to mix it up.
I legitimately wear like five highs in rotation. I have a lot more, like five or six that.
Go to. It's like every time you go in there and you look at your collection, you're like, I'm gonna try this one.
Not the right day for it.
I actually do. Tim, I didn't see in here any assessments. Did I miss that? Do we have, how the assessments are done? Yeah, I think it was, and Lindsay, if you wanna speak to that, I understood it was instructor observation, was one of the methodology. Yeah, just can you, Lindsay, can you walk us through how the assessments are done for the students to make sure? I got the, and maybe I just, I don't remember it very well, since I read it, but...
Sure, so they, essentially, in each of the competencies, the outcome goes that the student will have mastery of certain things. We summarize them in terms of our competencies of recording basics, editing basics, recording voices, et cetera. And the outcome is the teacher has to accept that they can essentially prove those, prove that they can do those skills through their projects.
Right, so it's project, review, evaluation.
And there's a cultivated final project in terms of the final sound recording, which essentially is like final evidence that they have reached and been assessed on all of their competencies.
And this is for half-credit? Yes, two half-credit courses. Lindsay, can you walk us through the music technology, recording technologies, just sort of, give us a sense of what that course is like from start to finish?
So, basically...
I bet it's an interesting course. It's not what we normally have for music.
Right, I mean, that's actually part of the reason why we're bringing it to you, is because we feel that this is one of the only, we feel that this is a gap in terms of what's available to youth in...
Oh, well, we, we can't hear you. Our recording technology is not going so great, so...
I did.
Oh, there you are.
My...
Hey, you're hearing that? Yeah, start over. We can hear you now.
Okay. Hello?
We can hear you now.
Okay, great. So, to, to our knowledge, this is part of the reason why we wanted to create a course specific to this, is that to our knowledge, there's nothing like this available in the state, and certainly not in this equitable access format that we're planning on launching the program in. You know, I think a lot of people know that students are interested in playing around with GarageBand and various sorts of applications on their own individual, on their own individual devices, if they have access to them. But this course provides equitable access to those types of devices and teaches people how to do the, use the basics of music technology to create their own sounds, to compose their own music, and to create a level of mastery in the digital technical world for music, which we find, again, is a service gap currently. A lot of students who are enrolled in traditional public school programs, you know, they have to be either on the typical chorus track or the typical band track. So, if you're not a chorus kid or you're not a band kid, there's not a great access area, or there's not like an on-road in order to be involved in music. But music technology and music production fields are booming when it comes to the actual job placement. Music business programs at colleges are skyrocketing in terms of popularity. So, this is kind of our way of trying to make music recording technology accessible. So this is kind of our way of trying to, um, make music recording technology accessible to those students who might not fall into the typical music program, um, formula that's set up in schools. And so that they can, you know, explore their interests and capitalize on their musicality, even if they're not necessarily playing saxophone or singing. A lot of, this is another innately creative and equitable way to be musical. And that's, that's one of the real crux of why we created this program.
Tim, would you say this is similar to, we have the, um, yeah, that we have that, um, Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, in Seligian Valley.
Seligian Valley where it's a theater program, but it's, it's, you know, it's.
Correct, yeah.
Behind screens and this seems to me similar in that respect. You're, you're getting a music credit, you're not performing music, but you're doing the necessary production work.
Well, so, but there is a, an element.
Yeah, you're producing and recording.
I mean, there's a degree of composition associated with it as well, like these programs are producing all kinds of synthesized sounds and stuff like that, that the students, I mean, quite frankly, there's a fairly, um, active program in the midterm program in Manchester with a bunch of underprivileged kids who are doing this kind of thing, trying to, you know, they're developing, they don't play an instrument per se, but they're certainly laying down track with the digital music and, and creating compositions of music. And quite frankly, um, you know, sometimes you can't even tell the difference, right? In other words, like, these kids do a good job.
If they're good, you can't tell the difference.
Yeah.
Well, some of our most successful producers and DJs don't play or actually create music. I think about Rick Rubin, who then creates music across categories. He notably doesn't play anything at all. And when asked, they said, how do you produce this specific content? He says, I go with my tastes, I learn to trust my taste. And then you have RZA from Wu-Tang, who has not played a single instrument, but somehow orchestrates all this music in his head and creates it up. So it makes sense that this would be, it actually is pretty cool that they have it like that.
Yeah, no, it's a different way to do it. Alright, that's all.
I move the State Board of Education approve the National Community Music School Learn Everywhere initial application.
All a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congrats.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, we're so excited.
We would like to.
Can we bring you a report?
Well, when you come back, uh, for your.
Yeah, for your next year, maybe, uh, create some recordings.
Yeah, that's nice for a mistape, if you could come with like a mistape this time around for some of the kids.
I would love that, that would be great.
We'd love that. Thank you, be well.
Alright, thank you.
When I first asked my question, there was a man who just answered, but I don't know why, but he was like, tell us about the program. And all I heard in my head was, she turned tables at my [inaudible]. Wait for her to start off the answer though.
That'd have been amazing.
I should start with name.
The meeting right there, that.
Alright. So, um.
Down public school.
There you go. New school.
Thanks, Tim.
Keep the music going.
So, uh, this is a request of the board to approve a new school. And I have Carl and Jennifer here with me. Um, and if you guys want to give a brief introduction, if you have a discussion, brief description of the school here in Lebanon.
Thank you very much for your time. First of all, I know you guys have had a long day and Tim also for his guidance in our application and all the work that we've done. Um, so we're the New England School of the Arts and we're in downtown Lebanon. And the vision was for, you know, really high quality arts-based program, um, in our local community that provides access. Because Jenny and I were fortunate enough to have arts education in our lives. Um, I grew up in Buffalo, New York, um, and I went to public schools, but I also had a lot of, um, access to high quality, through the, um, Auburn Arts Gallery School, University of Buffalo, things that I got to do. And a lot of, you know, we have young children ourselves. Um, Jenny and I are married, by the way, so if we talk over each other.
We're still married.
We must be married before.
We have just got engaged married.
We actually, we actually met together over education. I had, um, I was a career changer, I started teaching at thirty-five, I've been doing it now for almost twenty-three years now. Um, and Jenny, um, has been doing it for almost the same time. Jenny's a bit younger than me, but Jenny, um, definitely, um, we're passionate about education. Um, I've been a school leader for almost eighteen now though, and Jenny's been an educator and a teacher for almost that full time with some of the [inaudible].
And the school was born out of, we've wanted to start a school forever, but when the pandemic hit and we started watching arts programs being cut left and right across the country, it seemed like it was now or never that we put our minds together and create this project-based, arts-based school. And it's exciting, the city of Lebanon has fully embraced us, they've been incredible. And there are so many different arts and educational-based organizations right there that have, so there are so many organizations operating as silos. Our school is beginning to be this wonderful spider web that's connecting all these different groups together so that we're contributing to the city. And, and our school will hopefully be really wonderfully integrated in internships and experiential learning for the students.
Yeah, and I think we, we really brought this, because I started my teaching experience in Harlem in New York City. Um, and, you know, there are a lot of collaborative and community partners that I worked with, with my students, and when I became administrator, that was so important. And I think that when we saw downtown Lebanon, you know, you've got the green there, you've got the Arts Gallery, but all these things, all this culture, and nobody really was communicating.
It's a centered, like, school, yeah.
That we saw that as a perfect opportunity to, um, and also because I'm pretty capable and I understand I don't have to do ground sweeping and all the things for the students that have, that downtown area that they have access to this spot.
Well, I think it's important to look at resources too, and Carl was really good about this, because when we started the process, I was like, we're gonna build a state-of-the-art facility. It's gonna be a gorgeous hall, and he's like, and we're not doing that, that all costs too much, we'll go on through it in like the first month. And so he's like, let's use pre-existing resources, let's lease place, lease space, let's work with organizations that sit dormant during the day because they run after some programs. Um, and that was, that was.
Partner with established, you know, really established organizations. So we're working with Rossi's Foundation to, at Dartmouth College, to teach her foreign language, so we're gonna work with them, um, and to provide some guidance for our foreign language instruction. Um, Ava Art Gallery, some of the spaces there, and so if we have a student who, one of our suits wants to do welding sculpture, there's no way we could provide that even if we had Kimber Union's campus. So we can then collaborate with Ava and provide that, they have all the, you know, the blowers and the engine room and all the safety equipment to make sure that they're having safety. Um, we've got a wonderful board, so we're lucky to have, we've had a lot of guidance, Tim's been a great guide, um, getting this application, as I said earlier. Um, and we just assembled a really wonderful board locally, um, and just good people. We really want to provide a great education for kids locally and hopefully regionally and locally beyond. So that's what our vision is, and I think, um, we're excited about it.
Any questions?
I just, I just want to say, two, two poor things, one, I, I wish you all the success in the world, I love the arts. Um, I was fortunate enough to live in Rochester, New York, um, when my daughter was very young. And one of the benefits of living there is Rochester has an amazing music program, um, and I was on the faculty there, and so I'd go see old children, I would take my daughter and it's a great memory for me. And, um, and she got really into the arts. And I think the second thing I just want to say is you may not have a state-of-the-art facility yet, um, but we were just, I was just at Savannah College of Art and Design with my daughter this summer. And they started with one, you know, kind of beat-up building, and now they're, they're basically the city.
They run that downtown, that's.
Yeah, so I wish you all the luck.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I didn't realize you had somebody with this guy, that's a pretty cool.
Uh, my daughter was there for a summer program, thinking about going, we're gonna check out some, some other schools too, but.
I like the fact that y'all have the career writing this kind of section, the development section, because, you know, with art types, it's sometimes difficult to figure out how you're actually gonna mobilize those skills into a career. Um, and I'm very similar to Rich, except I'm from New Orleans, so I grew up in an art-focused community. Everywhere I looked around was somewhere infused with art. But also my mom made sure that in the summertime, I went to art-based summer camps, I went to a contemporary art summer camp for as long as I could imagine. So this type of a school is very encouraging, and like you mentioned, um, Lebanon has the infrastructure there, just needs to be engaged and kind of, uh, kind of, just put some momentum back into it.
I think one of the things that we have talked about constantly is we have taught in public education for so long, that neither of us came from families that could have afforded a private school price tag. So that's been sort of one of the things we've had to wrap our heads around. And the, the goal, though lofty one, is to establish a large enough endowment down the road so that students applying can go. Because the private school price tags can be significant, um, and so that's the only sort of, as a couple, that talking point.
We just appreciate that we're in a state where it's accessible to, uh, uh, programs in there, we are just listening to them, so, so, so the guidance, so that's, um.
Does he have encouragement?
Yeah, yeah, it's encouraging, so, um, yeah, we're excited, you know, to be part of this, so.
Hmm, um, New England School for the Arts meets all the applicable requirements of four oh three dot, um, one, and three, no, just four oh three. I move the State Board accept and approve the school for an attendance approval status for the period of October eleventh, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Second. That was, that was worked out right.
That was, you guys gotta do it again, one, two, three.
Second.
Okay.
No, that was at the same exact time.
Uh, okay, all a favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
I wasn't saying aye, I was.
No, it's.
If they can, you're all welcome to come visit, it's.
It's nice, we're enough to count.
We do have an event tonight, if you want to come, we have an artist, um.
Yeah, I'm sure they're eager to drive in the car.
It's an hour down the road, but it might be catered and be nice, and we have an artist from Yale University coming, showing his work, and so we're gonna have a meeting.
Very cool.
Thank you so much, thank you, Tim.
Our email addresses are all on the state website. Feel free to, you know, put us on the, okay, I'll belong to her myself, on the email list for your, um, events and stuff.
Chase a lot of takers, be careful which way.
Same, same.
I mean, your doors have to be shut, ready for you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Alright, thank you.
Alright.
Is, um, Bren Hayes still with us?
Yeah, when I started, I went to Savannah for work and I had not seen Scad in person. And then just looking at their campus, they pretty much kind of keep Savannah downtown like going. And I didn't know that they had something going on, I was just like walking around, I had an ice cream one day. And legitimately, they had like a, almost an Oscars-type of award show set up, they had Red Park it out there, and I just kind of stumbled on it, but it looks really cool, yeah.
This part works well, like, some of them's twenty minutes. So we could be the family.
The granite speaker coming in from other side.
Connection, but.
Pull that in the academy, the sponsor family.
Yeah, exactly. So, just keep that in mind.
Alright. So, the next item is a expanding of grade levels for building block, um, commons, and they're located in Exeter. And Bren Hayes is available to answer questions. So they're K to eight currently, and they're looking to add grades nine through twelve.
Hi folks, thanks so much, I know you've had a very long day, much appreciated.
It's been longer. What, uh, any questions? That, very straightforward application, so. Just got your own question?
I move that the State Board accept and approve building block commons request to add grades nine through twelve remaining term, there existing.
Second.
A favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, I love it when we can be simple, thank you so much, my friends.
Thanks, good luck.
Take care, thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Do you wish, and Tim, really, the tide, I mean.
I'll work on it.
Next month. I didn't realize how much of our fame of the arts, which board members all of us, so.
I actually recorded a CD while I was in college.
Okay, well, that is, uh, don't tell me, don't tell me you don't have a copy of that, line around.
Vocal, vocal or?
Like Marky Mark and the Bullies type thing, or?
Oh man, I think, uh, I think we have to have a, um, I don't know, like, on the bestie page.
You should have said anything about it.
Need a reveal.
Yeah, I'm, I'm old now, I'm in three.
Is it gonna be a full Julie?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe saxophone.
While we're waiting, you could give us a little, pretty, little.
Oh, wow.
Can you tell us the name of the song?
It's a whole album.
It's a whole album?
It's called, It Could Tell Us Supreme.
Oh my god.
Did you?
For opera?
Zip up.
Of course it is, that's what I said, like Marky Mark and the Bullies.
Man, okay, now, I, I don't know, but I, it's, it's gonna be a mission, I like, I mean, that's good.
And how can we, can we find it?
I, uh, where's, where's? Rich Farrell. Let's get Rich Farrell on. Okay, Julie.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Did you get a tea in Lebanon? You need a tea with some lemon, Joel.
Yeah, I'm working on it.
Okay, so we have.
You there?
The initial proposal for Learn Everywhere was the sort of changes to Learn Everywhere.
Is Tim still there, I can't see the speaker.
Oh, Tim's still there.
Tim is still here.
I'm here, yeah.
Oh, I see.
I don't know how I can talk, I'm just gonna mute myself until anything comes up then to talk for.
Okay.
Do you want me to come up?
I suppose so. You've been summoned by the. Yeah, so can you just maybe walk us through the changes?
Sure.
And the reasons for them, I noticed the first one. Is it change to the criminal check, uh, records check policy, making it an either or?
Yes, yeah.
No, the first one is adding public.
Oh, right, there's other changes right outside.
Right.
Oh, the academies, there we go. That was easy, I didn't think that needed to be explained.
Yeah, so having worked on the program now for about a year and a half, um, you know, implementing the program, I recognize there were some changes that I thought would be helpful in providing clarification on how we went through the application and approval process. And then we've had some providers that did have questions about the remote background check requirement.
Yeah.
And so we've looked into how ELOs operate in that regard, how parents consider these programs, because again, they're everywhere, programs, the parents are deciding to send their children please, it's outside the public school system, so.
Well, and I, and I would even maybe phrase it differently than that, and, um, I mean, my concept of how Learn Everywhere works is that parents are using these existing institutions already, regarding, you know, so it, it gets even a little bit different than saying they're sending the kid to the Learn Everywhere program. Their kid is engaged in some organization, some activity, a camp, um.
A music school.
And then, right, a music school, right, so they're, they're there, the kids are out in the field learning in these facilities. Learn Everywhere is just mapping, it's just taking what the kids are already doing and the families are already doing with their children and mapping it to the competencies. Right, that's what Learn Everywhere does, right? It's not sending kids to this organization, the kids are already there. We're just making sure that the learning they have there is, shows up aligned with the competencies so they can get credit for it. So I just think that's a misconception of the way, not that you misconceive it, but I think the way the public conceives of it is that we heard last month that there's tax money involved, that we're sending kids to these programs, and that's not quite the way it's, uh, it works, so I just, others will point out, uh, we, especially we thought about this particular issue. So for criminal, uh, records checks, you would have basically what we have now, um, except we're saying it's annually recurring, that's.
Correct.
Adding that. Or, instead of doing that, a statement that they don't do the criminal record check.
Correct, yeah.
And that's stated upfront.
Yes.
And notified to all parents.
Correct, and, and on our public facing website as well.
So can you just walk us through the, the, what you came up with as the, like, the rationale behind that?
Certainly, yeah, so we had an applicant who brought this to my attention, that the, the current language simply says, you have to have a criminal background check policy and you won't allow students to, or instructors who have been convicted of certain, or accused of certain, um, um, violations, interact with students. So the question became, well, what does that mean? Um, my understanding in public schools is teachers are, do a criminal background check once. Um, this applicant said, does it mean we do it once, does it mean we do it annually? And I felt that the current language doesn't clarify that. And so the first two options there are, we do it once upon hire, or we do it annually. As a parent, you might want to know that.
Yes, yeah.
And then it became, again, because kids are already at these places, and I've asked a number of parents in my own circles, do you ask if you send your kid to this organization? Do you ask if you send your kid to this organization that they have criminal background check policy? Ninety percent of the time, the answer was no.
No.
And so, and then I, as I understand it, um, and I may, I don't think I may correct in this, but, um, this is again from my personal experience, many ELOs, there's no criminal background checks completed. And so the public schools are not necessarily doing a criminal background check on ELO opportunities. For students, and so I'm just looking for consistency, is that acceptable? Um, to just have an organization that does not do a background check? And again, having the parent aware of that, and letting them make that choice, if that's something that they want for their child, or if they're comfortable not having that in place.
So can you give us an example of like, um, how this would work in real life? So currently, we're requiring that background check.
Yep.
But if we had an applicant come, uh. So I'm trying to think of scenarios where we would have a Learn Everywhere applicant, where that would be impractical, right, to make sure that every person that interacts with a child is, is criminal background checked, right, so. Large organizations, or, I don't know, a restaurant. I don't, even, teenagers come work in a restaurant, and not everybody's criminal background checked in the kitchen, you know? We have some, you know, some, I, I don't know, just in your thinking behind it, some examples of, like, how that would be a hindrance to an applicant, I can, I can think of some, but I didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, so we have, um, let's say that we have somebody that, um, has a gym.
Yeah.
And they've got the instructors, perhaps they're gonna give it the credit, they have all their, their, um, physical, um. A little trouble taking care of that, but, all their, um, trainers.
Yeah.
Right? So perhaps the trainers are background checked, but maybe the person that you walked in and sign in with every day is not background checked. Or the cleaners are not background checked, cleaning the building.
The other.
So there.
People at the gym are gonna.
Correct, um, yeah, many, a lot of our programs are not only, um, high school kids, right?
They're in the public.
They're, they're doing adult, uh, a lot of our martial arts programs are not necessarily only high school students. You would have other adults in there, so that would be a hindrance if you're asking somebody who's simply coming to learn, um, pride as a twenty-year-old. In the same group as a seventeen-year-old, saying, well, you need a background check, you know, so.
Right.
They provide flexibility, I think, to the applicants, and again, making sure that that's clearly explaining to parents in the application, or, or however, you know, the, the. Provider is communicating with the parents.
Right, it would have to be stated right up front.
Correct. Yeah. And again, we're required to post certain things in the terminals on our webpage. Criminal backgrounds check status is not one of those things, and this rule would add that to what we put on our webpage. So Karen, if they're coming to the program through our website, it would clearly state what the policy is there, as what.
Could we, I'm, I'm reading the way it's phrased here, uh, a statement that a criminal records check policy is unincluded in the app in the program, that's for the application. And reason to notify the parents in writing regarding criminal record check policy. Would it be maybe as we go along, um, okay, tweak that to say something like, um. Notify parents in writing that a criminal records check is not conducted. I just, trying to make it the way.
Oh, no, we could certainly tweak that language.
Yeah, I'm trying to make sure that it, that we're actually communicating to the parent precisely.
Yes.
What the situation is, is. Okay. So that would give parents an option, and maybe get more applicants.
Yes.
Sorry, Jim, what was that, was that an amendment that you guys were looking at, which was that?
Uh, no, Julie, I wasn't proposing one, we were just sort of.
Oh.
Thinking out loud about it. Okay. All right.
And do you want me to walk through the changes, or just the substantive?
I think the substantive, uh, like, you know, I don't know.
Yeah. So, one change is in fourteen oh three oh two.
Yeah.
On page four, um, and, and that's just some rewording of what was called the, uh, ad hoc Learn Everywhere Program Approval Committee. That committee has no approval authority, so I thought it was a misnomer doing this with that.
Good catch.
It's a little confusing when we get team members on board, and they say, I do not approve this, and I, again, the process is, you know, we work it through the system, the commissioner provides the recommendations to the state board, state board has only approval authority in this process, so.
Yeah, that's it, that's a good catch.
It's just clarifying that, um. But I wanted to clean that up. Uh, and then in, on page five, top of page five, which is fourteen oh three oh two. B, I think as we've seen, um, with the, uh, win arrow, for example. Sometimes we get programs that do not fall into a credential or an endorsement area.
Right.
So this just provides some flexibility to allow, I guess it would be me as the administrator, um, some flexibility in selecting team members who have the closest or, um, you know, the. Even like our, our career tech path, some of those teachers in that realm are better qualified sometimes. To address some of our, our, um, programs that are not in. A specific credential area, while I'm working with a, a fellow in Troy, um, that does adventure and, uh, type of stuff, and so it's a little hard sometimes to figure out, well, where does that fall in the. Available credentials in our credentials, so just move that up. Let's see.
Looks like it goes over the verification of the criminal background check policy.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, um, and that adds in writing to parents, so that would clear there. On page five, it's, uh, toward the bottom, number seven, some of the reviews we've, that did read a description of how the program will coordinate, or will meet individual student needs. And ensure that the program meets the requirements of ED three, fourteen oh three oh one, and that's about around, um, five oh four plans and IEPs. Some of the reviewers were asking for very specific, um, descriptions of, of how you would deal with individual students, as it says. So, but there's so many permutations of, of student need that could arise in a program, we just thought this was very, uh, specific, and so I just changed that. To address, because requirement is that the, basically, the applicant agrees to work with the LEAs. Around IEPs and, uh, five oh fours, but we were, people were asking, no, I want to see.
How will you.
How you work with somebody in a wheelchair, how you work with, you know. So again, it, it got very, uh, would get very cumbersome for the applicant to respond to something like that. And in case it's something they may never have to deal with, and so we just opened it up, and more of an agreement to cooperate and work with the LEAs. In this, on the top of page six, this is just a timing issue, um, because we have a sixty-day window to get the applicant, application to the board. And because the board only meets, um, monthly.
Yep.
Sometimes that can shorten that period to, to thirty days.
Yeah.
Or closer, depending on when it's complete, so this gives us a little, um, clarity on what that requirement is. The rest is just, um, some housekeeping, we did bring forward, oh, so one of the changes. Right now, we have a one-year provisional approval, and then a five-year.
Yeah.
Um, so I've proposed, and this could be flexible, but a, a three-year provisional approval.
Yeah.
Because what I've seen happen is, because you have to submit your renewal application ninety days prior to the expiration of your one year.
Yeah.
We can have a situation where, win arrow, for example, if they were, missed the meeting, they got approved that, they may not have been able to run any programs over the summer. And then by the time they have to submit their renewal application, it's still not summer.
Yeah.
And so they may not run a program, and we've seen that FFBI versus some program, so. Yeah, FFBI ended up being that way, they had their one-year approval.
Yep.
Ran no programming because of COVID, and then had to come back for a five-year.
No, that makes a lot of sense to me, for that exact reason, we had several that.
Yeah.
Uh, got the approval, but then didn't. Either the timing was wrong, or, or they just sort of.
Right.
Administeredly, like, we'll hold on to this, they didn't really get the program going, and then the year ran out.
Right.
Wanted to stay in the program, but.
Yeah.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
And, and it gives us an opportunity, if we go with three years, for a couple cycles of implementing a program, collecting that feedback, and then. Implementing that feedback as appropriate in your renewal application.
Sure.
If you want to make changes or adjustments, and so I think that'd be more valuable, um, for the applicants.
They still have to make a report, right?
Correct.
Every year, they have to give us a report of their student's.
Yes. Correct.
And all that.
Yeah. And I also, um. The stu, student evaluations, um, you, right now, that's part of a renewal application.
Yeah.
Um, I also included, uh, monitoring reports, because there's a requirement that we can monitor. And I felt that we're doing a three-year, then you should see the monitoring reports as well as the student evaluations, when you're evaluating renewal of the program.
Correct.
I can share with you, I've had multiple providers say they see no value in the student evaluations. But the, again, these are for you, and you're a renewal, but I wanted to share that with you, that.
I don't know, some of the student evaluations we've gotten were really helpful, I thought.
Yeah, and that's, again, it's your, for your purpose, okay, again, just wanted to share what some of the providers have told me.
I think probably too, remember, these are private providers, so if someone's not showing up, if they don't like it, they don't go.
They don't go, yeah.
Right.
Right.
And, um. Again, so fourteen oh three oh five, just updating based on other comments. Fourteen oh five oh one, this is the annual report, and I was just looking to move it from, uh, September to October, because we have a lot of programs that are summer.
Yeah.
And even late summer.
Yeah.
Um, so it would be helpful if we could just push that report for reporting purposes. And then on page ten, uh, looking to strike the, uh, program completion certificates earned by students while not enrolled in the school. As, and, as defined in ED fourteen oh two oh one J, which is a public nine through twelve school. Uh, shall only be granted credit if approved by the school superintendent. Um, I've talked to the commissioner about this a few times, trying to understand the history, um, because I, I just don't understand if a, if a public school student can take a Learn Everywhere. Of course, successfully complete it, meet the competencies, then bring a certificate to their high school, and the high school must accept it. If a, uh, private school student, for example. Takes that exact same Learn Everywhere course, decides to transfer back to public school. Why can't they have that same opportunity to redeem that certificate for the same credit? And I, I think it was something perhaps to do with home education during the negotiation.
I remember some of this negotiation.
I remember some of it, yeah, but I'm not sure I remember the ultimate.
There was concerns, it was concerned that, um, that you have a student, he gets all of their credits.
Yeah.
Outside of school, and it shows up on the last day of school, and it says, here, redeem all my credits and give me a diploma.
That was actually a scenario that was presented.
Exactly.
But we have the restriction on no more than one-third being awarded as well.
Exactly.
It does.
So they put. We also just don't have, I mean. Maybe in fifty years.
Yeah.
We just don't have the skill.
This, this is what was going on, right.
Right, you don't have the skill of the program.
Right.
For that to be.
And I kind of, I go back to, if the school must accept it, there's no involvement of the school.
Yeah.
While the student is learning this. And I, I guess I don't see the why.
One kid gets it.
Yeah, why you would need superintendent approval.
Right.
At the end, it's simply because you're not in the, not in the public school. So I, I don't know if it's a carryover from some of this other negotiation, and it's been.
There was a lot of conversation about this.
The one-third, maybe eliminates some concern about this.
I'm just curious, the language, does it state, just this is to your comment, that, that there was that option to add to.
Yeah, if you do more than one-third, then it requires superintendent approval.
Does it say that's the rules?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and the rules, yes, yeah, and the statute.
So, so my point is that it, it's not a closed door, you might still be able to get the credit.
Right, just go to your superintendent, say like, hey, I'm taking another Learn Everywhere program, can I get this credit?
Right.
Superintendent can say yes.
As opposed to there be no option.
Correct. Yeah.
Not like that.
But what we're finding too is, you know, so when we get Learn Everywhere programs, I share that out with, um, private, my private schools and the home education community, because they're. Although they, they don't necessarily meet the credit, because a private school can accept whatever credit they want.
Or good opportunity.
It's a, it's a great learning opportunity that has been vetted by this board, and so they see value in that, um, those two communities. And so if you do have kiddos that are taking these, something changes, and they end up in a public school. I, I feel like they're kind, they're somewhat penalized like this, like, you know, and I, and I didn't understand the thinking behind why you would want to do that, so that's what that.
Yeah, I think the, Frank's right, the, to my recollection, there was a fear that homeschool kids would. Earn a whole bunch of Learn Everywhere credits and then try to.
Shop an eye.
Get, get, get a, get a diploma from the school that wasn't at all from that school.
Right, right.
So I think that's part of it, that was part of the discussion, basically, so.
Yeah, so I think that one-third limitation maybe makes this not as criminal, but that's my thinking on the issue.
Okay.
And I think that was the last.
I motion to approve the initial proposal for ED fourteen hundred regarding Learn Everywhere.
That's it?
Thank you.
All fair?
Hi.
Thank you.
You're.
Julie, Julie feel better?
Well, she's still got.
Yeah, I think.
We still, are we?
Two more initially.
Oh darn, that was too soon.
Well, you've seen the report each time you missed their presentation.
Steven's here. She can't see you, unfortunately.
Okay. Computers.
Good afternoon, Steve Malley, Director of Education Support and Higher Education, um, the first item, computer science educator, this is a follow-up to the interim rule that was, that, that, Julie, was that last night? Yes, um, this is a result of HB two, the governor's drive to have more, uh, licensure for science teachers in the state. The, the major change besides the technical corrections is the addition of the industry-recognized credential in place of a bachelor's degree through four IT. Computer science corrections, so. So this follows that interim that already went through that we. Want to get on the books now, this is the actual, the article itself.
All right.
I motion to approve the initial proposal for ED five oh seven dot five four relative to licensure requirements for computer science educators.
All fair?
All right.
Great. Visual arts teacher.
So this was from the professional standings, but unfortunately, due to the timing, there's no one here from the PSB to talk about it, but there is enclosed, um, we've created a form in the PSB to convey changes to the board, so.
Oh, that's very helpful, this, this rattled.
Very helpful, where I can.
Oh, that's what my question was about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I had questions about this one, but if there's nobody here from the PSB.
Do you have time table, you could table it or monitor it?
I'm happy to table it if there's no rush.
I'd like to.
Yeah, to game orders.
Okay, yeah, maybe we can get them, because I did have questions about some of the changes, and why language was chosen.
Yeah, I, I. Yeah, me too.
Some of it just seemed redundant and not necessary to me, um.
I.
But a good conversation happened.
I have some philosophical.
Sure.
Questions.
Motion to table the initial proposal for ED five oh seven dot oh nine relative to licensure requirements for visual arts teachers.
All fair?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, special ed inclusive, that doc.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I.
Are we open to Julie, or?
I don't know, Julie, I mean, I can.
We even need her.
I can cover it as well, so essentially, this is, we just have aligned our state law and our state regulatory body with federal law relative to twenty-one inclusive relative to special education students.
Yeah.
Very frankly, it took us five years to get it through the legislature, which was.
Yeah, it seemed right.
But it did, um, but we got it through the legislature, now this is harmonizing the rules with that law.
I move that the state board adopt ED eleven hundred.
Second.
All fair?
All right.
Okay, school facility approval process.
We can get conditional approval back, so.
Okay. So, so that is back, so we can just go ahead and adopt, great.
I move the state board of education to adopt ED three twenty.
Second.
All fair?
All right.
Okay, that's nice for me too. Excellent, thanks, Julie.
Thank you, feel better. Feel better, yeah, well.
Okay. There's a quotation on here. Consultation on here.
Have a consultation, yes, that's on bond, so.
Alright.
When you read it. Okay, so my consultation is, so Melissa White is, uh, due, her term is gonna expire as the Vision Director for the Division of Learner Support. And I am recommending that she be renominated to that role for another four year term.
Alright.
So.
Do we, do we do a motion on that?
I don't know if you need a motion, I just have to consult with you, um, consulting with you, and then you just, if you, she's just like, don't do it.
And you're supposed to consult me, I don't think you have. I don't think we have.
No, I don't think you can.
I don't think we need it.
No, there's no vote needed, no, this consultation.
I can, I can still do it.
You can just do it.
Okay, yes, my.
Okay, let me just hit a couple of other high points for you, so you probably saw in some of the press this week, our Teacher of the Year announcement. Uh, Liz DuKlow from Pembroke Academy, um, you know, elementary school teacher, very big into the science of reading, very exciting to see her focus on trying to make sure that. Um, students get good reading instruction. Um, again, the science of reading program is continuing to um to do well, we've got over thirty three hundred people in the program. Um, our stickiness rate is well above any of our other states that are doing this, like typically. You have to enter the program, a hundred people enter the program, thirty people like get through, so we're at stage four in a, in the process. And we've got seventy percent have hung in there through stage four, um, with some opportunity for those other ones to catch up still, so. Um, so just real appetite for people to wanna focus on that. Um, some of you may have seen some of the advertising that we've got going on relative to the science of reading. Um, you know, actually, I was in downtown Manchester uh just last night, and we have a billboard on top of one of the buildings. It's some, I was with somebody and they were like, there's a big billboard and it says, wow, is the word, so it says, you know, there's words, you guys have seen these promotions, I know, so it's a word. And it says, you know, the love of reading starts with just one word, and so each of ours is a little different, but um, so I was getting to explain that to them. Um, as well, uh, we have, we announced, did we release today, already this week, Bodie Miller?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we had an endorsement from Bodie Miller, um, and we have a little video, a little TikTok video of him reading to his two little boys. And uh, just promoting, you know, the love of reading, you know, to, to just encourage everybody to get involved, read to kids, talk to kids about where that's what that's gonna be all about. Um, you may have seen that we released um our some additional assessment result data. Um, so you know, back in July, we received, released like the overall state results, and I kind of talked a lot about that, I'm happy to ask, answer any questions about that. Cause the overall narrative hasn't shifted, but we've released the school level data. Um, and I don't know if anybody has seen it, it's, I was talking to, right, uh, before I called you yesterday relative to this meeting. I uh was on the phone with a reporter trying to understand, it's, it's this Excel spreadsheet, it has like seventy five thousand lines. But there's all kinds of data filters, and if you know what you're doing, you can manipulate the data and you can get what you need. Um, but some of the individuals who are working with the data just felt it was a little bit intimidating, so. Um, we are working on trying, we we will put out the report cards that's coming like end of November, early December, so that's kind of the visualization, the visualization of that. Um, but maybe to try and make that Excel spreadsheet even easier for some people to access, cause not everybody's interested in that, and seventy five thousand lines of data, but it's all out there. And so that includes, you know, so by school, you can look at, uh, you know, by grade, by assessment. Um, you know, by subgroups, by all kinds of data is in there, so you can just explore away. Um, and that, we did a press release on that, and that is out there. And we had done a press release, I think, after the last meeting, but since this meeting, relative to, we got a four million dollar grant. Um, at the department relative to our um uh financial data systems, ours and those schools. Um, so and essentially, you know what we've done, how we've done with all of the data we have, we've created iPlatform, we've created iGrant, right? Relative to that, to just create these good data visualizations about the information that we have. So this grant is gonna allow us to do the same thing with the financial data for schools, right? So we're gonna have like standardized charts of accounts, and uh, so everyone's gonna be able to report stuff, and you'll be able to compare, like, oh, this district spent this much on this item, this district spent this much. And so it really, cause again, we have a lot of financial data, all of the DOE twenty fives are out there. Um, but again, it's just, they're just vast amounts of data, so this, we use modern technology and data tools to make all that data accessible. It's really just modernizing our systems, it's.
Will that be on the state website, do you want application?
Correct.
Uh, maybe, uh, so what I've found is that parents.
I finance well.
Don't, yeah, but uh.
I dollars.
So pa- parents don't know for the most part, there are a handful that follow this thought, but most parents really, really don't know what their public school spend.
Most legislators don't.
Most legislators don't. And every, every district does a budget, every district releases their finances. Um, but something like this being available on a district website would be. Much more accessible and usable, right, because the parents are coming to the state website, then, you know, for the most part.
Yeah, right.
But they'll go to their, they engage with their district website, they'll.
So we could talk, work with the schools to see if they can put a link to this website, cause we'll host it ourselves, obviously, cause you gotta have certain technology to host it, but.
Yeah, they have.
Uh, but we could ask districts to put a link out there, so then people can go to it.
I think real terms, real terms, but I was doing, this would be great.
I think all this data, a lot of people love, so.
Well, a lot of parents, you know, it's, it, so you don't have, for example, um, you know, with the finance data, you can easily get, especially at a town instead of a city, right? You're, you're gonna see your school district budget.
Yep.
See your receipts.
But you don't see it in that level of detail, like what they spent on this and that, which I think is great, but you also don't get a look back, it's one year.
Great, so that is with a trend line, something like that.
If you can look back for five years and see, okay, how have the finances changed over time, how, that, that's just really useful for.
I mean, part of the goal really that started out with iPlatform was to what I call facilitate conversation, cause too often what happens in communities is people talk past one another.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause everybody's guessing at what the actual information was, and so this is like, and we can all have the same information, and we can have a legitimate and an intelligent conversation about that.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that's, it helps policy decision making and policy, you know, discussions, so.
Does, in the same, uh, is there a line in this information that lists enrollment?
Uh, so we already have enrollment data on our website.
I think it would be very interesting to track the enrollment and the spending.
And put that together, well, we do have per pupil spending and enrollment already in iPlatform, so we've got that. Uh, so this is actually gonna be probably not so much that as much as it is just gonna give you more brand awareness information relative to where the money's going in the district, right? So you're able to see, you know, kind of standard charts of accounts, a little bit of accounting wonkiness associated with it, but.
It's supposed to be useful for school board members too, right?
But anybody.
They might not understand, okay.
Well, where are we spending this, and so we're spending this, like, when you, how's your policy?
Right, well, we can look at those suburban districts and see, maybe you're, maybe they're getting a better deal on stuff than you are.
Yeah. Could be.
Right, combined resources.
Yeah.
Always good info.
Okay, so that's coming up, um, so the New Hampshire Great Apple Crunch is on October eighteenth. Uh, this is a, you know, we will be promoting it, it's basically a celebration of farm to school here in New Hampshire, and obviously the apple industry is a big industry here in the state of New Hampshire.
Have you suffered any here?
Yeah, I heard.
It did get her with all of the uh.
Fifty dollars for the bussel of the apples.
Did you?
And we, yeah, fifty dollars for the bussel of the apples, they had their whole archer, their whole archer got killed in the leaf frost. And so they had to bring in apples from another one, and just asked for some support, and we went to check on it, it was like fifty, and I was like, I had to ask for the tree.
Can you check the ground?
I just gotta get to the ground, it's, it's a tight market right now, because that.
Interesting, okay, so we got the crunch coming, um.
So what is that, though?
The apple crunch, I, I mean, it's really just working and celebrating kind of a, we have a farm to school month.
Yeah.
And we emphasize the apple aspect of it, the apple crunch, and so we get a whole bunch of pictures of people biting into apples, celebrating kind of the industry, but celebrating eating good food and nutrition. Um, encouraging our students to engage fruits and vegetables. Um, military cards for kids, um, I was asked to clarify, so I think I had announced this the last time, but. We're gonna, we're gonna cross a million cards this time, but that's not just New Hampshire, you realize that we've recruited now, every state in America is participating in the military cards for our troops. Um, so we're gonna go over a million, because everybody else is kicking in, our kids are not that prolific, get rid of that, we're a big contributor, but we're not in a million dollar, million cards, so. Uh, making sure that that's clear. Um, you know, we sent out recently, you probably saw robotics grants, uh, you know, for the robotics things that are going on. Um, you all are gonna receive a invitation from Tim Broderick on November fourth, there's a robotics tournament coming up. Uh, in case you're interested in attending that, you'll probably see that, um, and again, if you have a chance to go, that's great, um, you don't have to be there all day, it'll probably be a prospect, um. We don't have.
We saw the robotics team, they were, they were, that was cool.
Were you, yeah. So you wouldn't, I mean, it's not the kind of thing where you'd have to go all day if you don't want to, you can just come up and enjoy a little bit if you feel like doing it, but that's coming. Um, and so I will just leave that, and so that's pretty much, I can't go on.
Alright. Open more discussion.
I wanted to add on the Teacher of the Year, so Ms. DuKlow is, it's kind of understated, the Teacher of the Year award, I mean, these people are literally masters of their craft. And they have been for the three years that I've been on the board, um, but Ms. DuKlow is actually really, really good. Early education, as we know, is very important, especially for reading and comprehension. And we walked into a classroom that had a mic set up and kids learning, and they're all excited, doing group work, all at different learning abilities, but working together. And she was just, she's just a really, really impressive educator, um, and so I just wanted to give her another high five publicly, because she was. It's always a tight application pool, especially once you start to get into the finals, but she was exceptionally well.
Rock star.
Yeah, she really is, she just, she's one of those teachers that when you see what's happening, if you're a person that's concerned about the state of public education. Um, you should feel less concerned about the teachers that are doing the public education, because teachers like Ms. DuKlow is kind of show you. Um, I don't think we should be worried about the teachers personally, there's a lot of other concerns that we should have.
It was fun, we were there, those kids were so noisy, they were just screaming, they were so excited, it was a wonderful.
They were all, they were all their camp, I'm sorry, I didn't get the chance to get to the reveal, but just, she was, she was very, it was very clear that uh, she's top of the, top of the charts for sure.
Awesome, alright, meeting minutes. Do you have any issues I didn't, oh, you want, I did though. I was having.
Now I gotta scroll.
Sorry to hold this up for a little longer.
Right now, hey, don't hide it.
Uh, yeah, let me scroll through, um, it's two year five, it was in the, some of these were tight minutes. These were just on point, no, no explicit stuff, but there were a couple.
I'm not supposed to read, I have to stop.
Cause we're a long meeting and um. Let me just find, there were two where they. Had the, had a public speaker identified, but didn't say what their position was. Um, let me just find it up quick. Okay, Jody Underwood, uh, this is page five four seven seven, the bottom one.
Okay.
Was on the Quinns School Board for ten years, has PhD in education, but that's not what she came here to say. She came here to say she was supporting a party or you, remember, do you remember that, right, Jody, so she was supporting it.
Correct.
Yeah, so I just, that wasn't in there, and then um.
What page was it, it just said that?
That was, uh, yeah, fifty four seventy seven, the last line on the page.
I'll probably find it, just find her name.
Yeah, it just, it didn't, it didn't state what her position was.
Okay.
And then Rich Gerard, Richard Gerard, uh, the third one down, fifty four seventy eight. Also, um, didn't indicate that he was in favor of it, um.
He did, but it's not listed.
Uh, it's not, he did, but it's not listed in here, um, Corey Dodge, the next one from Derry, expressed her opinions, but it doesn't say in what way, and I don't remember if she was for or against. But I just feel like for the record, and then it should reflect if a speaker was for or against, if they came all the way to here to do that. Um, and the next one too, Lynn Mulruy, it doesn't say whether she was for or against, and.
I'll go back and then.
I, I, I think that's just worth including to the record. Some historian's gonna go through this at some point and wonder what the heck these people were doing, just identifying themselves, but.
It made it too, there were some instances where things were cut out, so like we were, we were, yeah, so I'll, I'll go back towards the difference.
I mean, and if, if that's the case, if there was some glitch and it's indeterminate, that's, um, the video recording might reflect that.
Yeah, I'll go back through it to see what Peter has.
But if, if for some reason we can't determine, it should say in the record, if we were unable to determine, I think that's just fair, because this is the record of it. Um, and then the last one, Michael Strand, shared his opinions about the program, I mean, he was opposed to it, so that should be your point.
Against.
Okay, that was it for my changes.
Excellent.
Alright.
Do you wanna say this, what they would need?
I think just propose, uh, we can do it accepted with the, with.
With the proposed amendments.
Right, as an amendment.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second, second, all better.
Alright.
Okay.
I'm sure you're a jerk.
Oh, you're moving, you're so, you're moving so fast.
I just wanted to let you know, I uploaded, we already had, um, the EFA stuff uploaded into Canvas.
Right.
And there's a video that you wanted to show, but I had them up, cause I.
Did you have it, I wasn't sure if we were getting it.
I, I, I uploaded, I had it uploaded into Canvas, so it's free on your presentation today and Canvas at once.
So you can watch, they can individually watch it, like.
Yes, yes.
If you can get it in Canvas.
You wanna, you wanna watch it now?
I don't think we can put it on the uh screen is the problem.
No, it's. Do you wanna see it right now?
Shouldn't you try it, but I just didn't want you to, I didn't follow up, cause I was afraid you'd go to it.
It's sent.
Well, it's just, this is about the receding curiosity in the program and the work that we're doing with the Community Behavioral Health Association.
I'm while you're doing that, Angela, I, I wasn't sure, I had a reporter reach out to me yesterday and trying to get some of the agenda stuff. And said that the packet wasn't online, so I just.
No, it wasn't, you know, I don't think I'm gonna be able to get on this sucker, um, no, it wasn't, cause I was actually on vacation last week and didn't get back till Tuesday, so.
That's what I figured, but.
But it will go up, I, I, it actually works out, cause I'll be able to grab all of the um materials from, like, from the public comment and can add them all.
Yeah, but I just wonder in, in the future, if we have a situation like that, um, maybe we can definitely make IP or somebody, so.
And you did, that's right.
Oh, hold on. Oh, this, oh yeah, here we go, here we go, they can't see this, yeah, there we go.
So are we gonna watch that, or?
I think it's not possible, you're in competition, so.
It's, it's, it's a little.
Alright.
We'll try and get the, you know, the technology.
Or should we do it?
Over to you.
Yeah.
And then, all better.
Alright.
Alright.
Rich looks really sad, but it's not true.